I'm gonna call this meeting of the city council to order. Be in June 28th, year of our Lord, 2022, 6:00 PM. The invocation will be given by Pastor John Mclemore from Belmont Baptist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge by Councilmember Sprouls. Pastor, come forward.
Father God, we come tonight to ask Father God for your blessings, for your protection, for your guidance, Father, most of all, for your wisdom. Father, tonight you'd be with our leaders, you'd be with our citizens, you'd be the people of this city, that Father God, we'd come together in unity, Father God, to serve one agenda, Father God, and that would be bring honor and glory to you. Father, we just ask that as our leaders address the business of this city, that as our citizens speak on behalf of the citizens of this city, that we'd be civil to one another, that, Father God, we'd understand that we need to understand one another. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us, Father. We thank you for this city, we thank you for these leaders, we thank you for all the things that you've done. These things, Father, we pray in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
I am the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Everybody can be, please be seated. We have a presentation. You want to go, yeah, you want to present it. You don't want to talk to the dads, you want to talk to the community. There you go.
Good afternoon, thank you for being here and thank you for the City of Odessa for allowing us to come out here. My name's Christina Escobar, Assistant Director for Your United Way of Odessa, and with me is Andrea Martin, my co-partner. And we are here to actually thank the City of Odessa and all of our residents and employees for everything that they do to support us, always engaged, always allowing us to come talk to the employees, supporting our mission and our cause, which is to serve. So we are able to do that with the support of our community. So today we want to recognize the City of Odessa and another plaque for Randy. She doesn't want me to tell you that, but Randy is instrumental for us as well, as well as Michael and all the internal nuts and bolts of the organization. So I'll turn over to Andrea, she'll talk more about these plaques. And the reason we are doing these at this point is we normally award these during the February timeframe when we have an annual banquet. For obvious reasons, the Rona prevented us from doing that the last few years, but we still want to recognize our supporters, so here we are, thank you.
If I had been up here last year, it probably would have been like a deer in a headlights. I've only been with the United Way, be a year, July 6th. At that point, I signed a pledge form for 32 years with the school district because I'm just a nice person, I'm, you know, I'm about giving, I thought, you know, knew that United Way was a good thing. But within the last year, I have learned so much about how it really works, what the, what the raising the money is all about. And I got to see the allocation cycle these last few months. So now that I have seen the full cycle, I'm 100% behind what the United Way stands for and does. And a lot of times people will thank the United Way and it's not thank us, it's thank you. With that said, I do want to recognize the City of Odessa first for the Dick and Amelia Salisbury Sustained Excellence Award. You know, I know that this comes with a lot of hard work. Last year I was actually invited to attend their committee meetings where they started planning for the, their big kickoff. And I can tell you that I got choked up just watching the employees and the committees work. They were truly dedicated to making the kickoff just wonderful and to get everybody excited and share the message. And it just made my heart just, it very, very rewarding to see that there were people that bought into the mission and they knew what the giving was all about and they took it very seriously. They started out, they talked about popcorn sales, they talked about giving away stuffed animals. I think that worked out right. Then they had a big employee luncheon, which was very well planned and well attended. So the campaign was big, it wasn't just a few people involved, the whole, the whole City of Odessa. I always joked about when I came over and did the workplace campaigns on Thursday that, you know, if I ever left United Way, the City of Odessa would be a pretty good place to work. A lot of great benefits, a lot of great people. So that's enough of that. Again, the first award is the Dick and Amelia Salisbury Sustained Excellence, and that's exactly what it means, that it's about sustained excellence. It's presented to acknowledge the City of Odessa for demonstrating commitment of improving the entire Odessa community through the United Way of Odessa. I can tell you that during the '21 campaign year, the amount raised was $40,847.48, which was actually $13,037 more than the previous campaign. So they could have gotten most improved as well, but kind of have to spread the awards. So that was a big, a big acknowledgement. So with that said, we want to present this award to your wonderful leader, just again thanking the whole City of Odessa for this amazing campaign.
Thank you all, and the thanks really goes to the employees of the City of Odessa. I've been here 28 years and in that year, in those years, rather, this organization has had a long relationship with the United Way. You know, we have such wonderful employees who care about this community, who are so engaged in so many of the agencies that you assist. And this is just, I think, their way to say, not only do we work for the city, but we care for this community as well. So Mayor, I will accept this on behalf of the employees of the City of Odessa.
And finally, we have one more award, and this really was, we almost had the trickery into doing this, but we know that with every campaign, there's also someone behind it. A lot of people play a part of it, but we also have an award for the Outstanding Work Site Coordinator. Every, every campaign has a coordinator that's bugging people about getting their pledges turned in, collecting all the money, making sure it's safe and getting it to us in the right way. I can tell you that when the Finance Director and I came to pick up the funds from the city, I asked Randy if she would volunteer to be a trainer because it was just immaculate, so, so well done. So we want to present this to Randy Pineda for her dedication, hard work, in making sure that the campaign at the City of Odessa was flawless, so thank you, Randy.
Next item, any citizen wishing to make comments on non-agenda items can do so. By coming forward, you have three minutes to be able to make a comment on non-agenda items. Remind the council that you cannot respond or engage in discussion with items that are not on agenda that is presented by any citizen can come forward. You can do so by coming forward, stating your name for the record, and you can do that now. While we wait that, I want to be able to remind any member of the public, may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during consideration of said item. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close that non-citizen agenda item. We'll move over to the considered agenda. Council, have you had a chance to review the considered agenda as presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, ma'am.
I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmembers Swann, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Moving to other council action, resolutions. Item one, consider approval of the facade grant for homemade wines. Ms. Casey Hallmark-Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Council. I am here to present a grant for the facade for homemade wines. Homemade wines located at 400 North Texas Avenue submitted paperwork requesting a facade grant through the downtown incentive program. The total grant request is $25,000. Owner investment is $61,400 for a total business improvement of $86,400. The facade grant is in tier one, so it is an 80/20 split, and they did max out at the $25,000 for the facade.
Council, any questions, any comments? Do we have a motion for item one considered for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Move on to item two, consider approval of infrastructure grant for homemade wines. Ms. Williams.
Yes, we again have a grant for homemade wines, this one is for infrastructure. They requested an infrastructure grant through the downtown incentive program. Total grant request is $133,910. Owner investment is $304,650. Total business property investment is $438,560. Again, it's in tier one, for infrastructure, it's a 50/50 split with a max of $200,000. They didn't quite reach the $200,000 cap because a lot of the things that they are going to be doing for improvements are not covered by the grant. And this is going to be in addition to their current location. They are moving downtown, they're moving all of their production downtown, and they needed a bigger space to do that. So they've outgrown their current location and are really excited to get them downtown and get their building updated. They're hoping to get started soon and be done by the end of the year.
Ms. Williams, you want to address where exactly this is for everyone in the, in attendance today? What building?
Yes, this is 400 North Texas. It is on the northeast corner of Texas and Fourth Street. It's the old tire shop, I believe is what it was. So it's adjacent from the courthouse. It's in a great location, it's gonna be really close to the new OC project, and it's just gonna be a great addition to downtown.
Council, any discussion? Do we have a motion for approval? Sir, I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Sprouls, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to a public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by Jim Camp, owner Bill Anderson, agent to rezone a single family of three SF3 of office to approximately 0.393 acre tract. Mr. Brenly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. The city mailed out 25 notices related to this request. We did not have any of these notices returned, and we did not receive a positive or a negative response related to the request. The property involved in the request is located in the northeast corner, the intersection of East 42nd Street and McKnight. The site is currently zoned single-family, three, it is occupied by two vacant structures. And these structures were formerly used as a church and an associated pasture residence on this property. Land use in the area does consist of a single-family residential development. The applicant is Jim Camp, he is the owner of the property. Bill Anderson is the agent. And the purpose of the rezoning request to office would facilitate office use development on this site, and it is specifically to be used as a insurance office. The request is not out of scale with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located at the intersection along a thorough, a major thoroughfare within the city, and in this case, it's 42nd Street. And this would allow for an office zoning and also the associated less intensive uses that do occur in office zoning district. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or on surrounding properties. The office development does not have a line with development in this area. And the proposed zoning district would be encircled by a single-family residential development, and it would facilitate a reasonable land use transition between this property and the residential development that is in the area. Is it, excuse me, existing development standards on the property, which do include parking, building setbacks, and lock coverage, all support office development on this site. So there would not need to be extensive changes, and it would actually improve and clean up this area, just a little bit better make it more presentable for the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the rezoning request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any discussion, questions?
Randy, the parking is one thing I was worried about, is there enough room? I mean, I'm sure there is.
Yes, sir, there's, there's plenty, it's a...
It's like, yeah, that helps. I know, I saw this, but I just wanted to look at it again.
Yes, sir, there, there's plenty of parking for office use development there, and it's an existing curb cut, and it would not have any type of impact of the traffic flow off 42nd Street and McKnight.
So ingress and egress is gonna be on McKnight?
No, sir, it'll be off of 42th, where the existing curb cut is, yes, sir.
With the curb, okay. Thanks, that's it.
Council, any further discussion? Any comments? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item can do so by coming forward, stating your name. You can do so by coming forward now. Seeing that no one's coming forward, I'll close the open hearing segment of this and consider a motion for approval from council.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White, second by Councilmember Sprowl, Sprouls, I'm sorry, Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item four, open public hearing, consideration for reallocation of $305,844 in CARES Act Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we're asking you to consider allocating $305,884 in Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds that were allocated previously to eligible projects. The projects must be eligible for funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic. The council had previously allocated these funds to other agencies, and they've been returned to the city for reallocation. I do want to make one note in your project book, there has been a withdrawal of one of the applications for the coronavirus funds. So you just have two projects there to consider, and they're, they're less than the amount you have to allocate. I'll be happy to answer your question.
Maria, and I had asked you a little earlier, the one that withdrew was quite a bit. So what, what mechanisms do we have to either, what can we do with that?
You can either choose to allocate additional funding to, to projects that are eligible, or we can go out and hold another public hearing and request applications for the balances you, you don't allocate tonight. And we're open to do it either way, did you want to do that?
Council, you would just want to go through that process? And do you want to address, you want to go ahead and address that? Do we want to, do we want to reallocate the, the funds? And whatever's left over, do, I mean, do you want to have a discussion about that? Or just go ahead and go with the process of allocating what we're gonna allocate and then discuss that at the, at the lab?
Mayor, you want, you may want to take these separately. For example, it may be in the council's interest to make a decision on the CDBG CV funds and then on the, what we call the regular CDBG and home allocation, and then obviously separate from the outside agency request.
Sounds good, sounds like a plan. They're good?
Yes.
So can we, are we done?
Maria, would you go over the eligible...
Or we just bring it back at a later time? Because she said we could reallocate it now.
Yeah, so Maria, you mentioned that there were two eligible projects.
Right, there are two eligible projects, which is the departmental request for $100,000 for administrative funds to help continue to support our rental program that we have, that we're using coronavirus funds for. Then there's a request from Meals on Wheels for funding for various activities that they do. Those are the two requests that are, that are eligible.
The amount's 270, right?
The total amount that we have available.
That was, that, from the request that was rescinded, was 270 or 207?
270.
270, right?
270.
And Maria, can I explain on the program administration, community development, you've requested 100,000, and if you were to get more, what would that go to?
We could, we could put it toward our rental, actual rental program, or, because the 100,000 should go ahead, continue to support the administrative part of the program as it is right now.
And by rental program, you mean helping those who...
Right, who, who have been affected by the virus and have lost income because of the virus. You know, but we've had people that, and we still are getting people who have, you know, caught, recently caught coronavirus, and they're coming in and needing help.
And how do they apply for that?
We have, we do PSAs, we also have the application information out on our website. We have flyers. Word of mouth is a big, is a big way that we've received referrals because somebody's been helped and they tell someone else, and that's a big way that we get our referrals.
And it's rental assistance.
It's rental, mortgage, and utility we can do with the program.
And you still get new applicants?
Yes, we are.
And Maria, how much was the request by Meals on Wheels?
I'm sorry?
How much was the request by Meals on Wheels?
113.17.
And so, Maria, the, 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 there would be a balance.
Right, I think it's around $93,000.
And the council's options are exactly what on it?
Are either go ahead and allocate that $93,000 to one of the two projects that we have in our book, or they can choose not to allocate that $93,000, and we'll go back out and request applications and go through our, our public process again.
Thank you.
About how long would that take if you had to do that?
We have to have two public meetings and application process. We can probably do it within a month and a half, two months.
And it's just 93, that we're talking, 93,000?
It's around 93,000.
So we could split it up if we wanted to, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to give part of the Meals on Wheels and part of it on rental assistance?
Yeah, if you want to, yes, sir.
Kind of my thoughts.
I think we should split it.
You split it?
Just split it.
I'll make that in the form of a motion if you'd like.
Do we, we don't need, do we need a motion?
Yes, sir, you would.
Okay, so, so we have a, go ahead, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yeah, make a motion that we reallocate, reallocate the $93,000 that's been returned to the Meals on Wheels and, and, what'd we say, Meals on Wheels and the, and the rental assistance equally.
I don't think it's 93,000.
No, sir.
That's the balance.
That's the balance, that's the 308 we're talking about, sorry.
305.
305, yes, I'm sorry.
305, 884.
Right, I'm sorry, I got caught up in her balance.
Yes, so...
Equally divide the 305, round figures.
Okay, we have a motion into splitting the 305K between the two programs. We have a motion. So we have a motion, you have, you have discussion.
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, do you, I thought we were splitting the 92,67. Not splitting equally the 305, 883 because Meals on Wheels had originally requested more than what the program administration was.
Yeah, so splitting the balance.
The 92, 67, but is that what you...
Well, that's what I was originally thinking, but anyone explained that, Michael?
Yes, sir. So you would have to agree to the reallocation of the 305,000, 305, 884. And as, as requested in your book, you'll see the request from the Community Development Department of 100,000 dollars and a separate request from the Meals on Wheels for 113. You would, you would allocate to that, and you would also split the, any remaining balance among the two agencies, correct, the two requests?
Right.
So your motion's correct.
What he said.
Yeah. So your motion's correct. So we do have a motion to reallocation the 305.
Yeah.
And so we have a motion by Council, Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember White, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're down to the process of allocation. So how are we starting? So are we gonna, Maria, you gonna take the head and guide us through this?
Yes.
This is always a fun process.
Yeah. Tonight, you also have before you the request for the Community Development Block Grant Funds and the Home Investment Partnership Program. The city will receive $794,846 in Community Development Block Grant Funds for program year 2022. In addition, the city has $107,412 in program income and unprogrammed funds that are available for allocation tonight. The total available for allocation of CDBG funds is $902,258. Please note the following caps apply to the funds. For program administration, $162,600. And for public service activities, $132,841. To continue to provide services to the citizens, the Community Development Department is making the following requests for CDBG funding. We're asking for $158,000 for program income, I'm sorry, program admin, $440,000 for housing rehab. The housing rehab funding will pay for one and a half staff members' salaries, benefits, and their operating costs. The balance of it will go toward the actual construction and rehab of the homes. We're asking for $175,000 for demolition, and that total amount will go strictly to the removal of structures. We're looking at developing a, a new program, which is a short-term rental assistance program. We're asking for $40,800. This is a new request using actual CDBG funds because since we started our coronavirus rental program, we have discovered that there is a significant need in our community for people who are having trouble making their rent every month. And it has become extremely difficult since inflation, inflation has hit with the cost of gas and food in, in our community. We, the Census Bureau told us that 41% of the households that reside in the low mod census tracts, which is approximately 3,578 households, are experiencing cost burden for their, for their rent. That means they're paying at least 30% of their income toward their rent, rent. And also 16% are considered overly cost burden, which is more than 50% of their household income going toward their rent. So this continues to be an issue here in the community, and we're asking for funding for $40,800 for the short-term rental program. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions, any discussion?
When they apply for the rent assistance, do they have to meet what guidelines?
They have to live within the city limits, and they have to meet our income requirements. And then they have to show us, you know, like pay stubs and all to be sure where they're in that income bracket. And then we can evaluate and work with their landlord to, you know, set up an agreement. The landlord has to agree to accept the funds from the city. So they, and they have to agree to abide by the agreement with the tenant and the landlord.
Just another concern, I had it with the other, is that we need to be real careful that some of the people who may fall into this category may not have access to iPads, laptops, things of that nature. And so we need to be certain that we're getting that word out in means that people who don't have electronics is able to access it.
And, and we've done things like, we've gone around to the apartment complexes, and we've put out flyers in their offices so the managers at the apartment complexes know that we have funding to help, you know, people with their rent. We've, we've mailed out stuff to the apartment complexes. So we've, we've tried to blanket, especially those apartment units and all, with, with the information. And then we do PSAs, like I previously said.
And this is aside from coronavirus.
Yes, this is in addition to the coronavirus fund.
So are we ready to start this process?
Do you have any information on family promise other than what was in the book? No?
Are they here, Maria?
On what was that?
Family promise.
Oh, family promise.
Yeah, we do. We do have someone here from Family Promise wants to address the council.
Mayor, Councilman Lebride, my name's Don Briggs. Presently the president of the Board of Family Promise. We wish to thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, sir, that way we can get it on record.
Okay. We wish to thank you for your past support. We, uh, have been ha- serving the homeless and children of families of Odessa for many years with your support. Family Promise is a collaboration between the churches, nonprofit organizations and funders of the community. We exist to help homeless families gain financial independence, eventually becoming homeowners on their own. Recently, we have noticed a twenty-five percent increase in the homelessness in the city of Odessa. We used to receive three hundred calls a year. Over the past two years, we've been receiving over four hundred calls for help per year. Our program is a system of long-term assistance for families who are admitted in to a overnight stay program. If they qualify, can stay for a year in Family Promise. We provide food, shelter, clothing, transportation, childcare, job hunting skills, personal counseling, financial literacy and other services. We require families to save eighty percent of what they earn while they're working so that they may be independent upon their years discharge of the program. Families learn to budget and their average, excuse me. They must arrange for transportation, home, furniture and other necessities prior to exa- exiting our program. We have a ninety percent success rate to this date and we stay in touch with the families that need, in need that stabilize for years after they have completed the program. I had the chance, by chance, meet one of our ex-program people a couple of months ago.
Three minutes are up.
Go ahead and finish your last thought, sir. Go ahead and finish up that last thought.
Uh, she's been out of the program for five years. Still lives in the same home she moved into, still has the same job and is attending night classes at O C. I would call that a success.
Yes, we would. Thank you very much, sir.
How many families are you currently serving?
Ma'am?
How many families are you currently serving?
Right now, one with three children.
One, okay. And are you still collaborating with the churches in the city?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'm not sure right now. I think we have five churches that are back, you know, COVID did everything. But, uh, we've got five churches committed to work with us again on this. Uh, and it, we're getting a lot more support from them than we did in the past. I think COVID helped in one way and destroyed in another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next one will be up, uh, Shaping Head Start. No one from the Head Start here? Jesus House? Just state your name for the record.
Shirley Almanza. Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me say, uh, my piece for a minute. Um, we are asking for funds for an air conditioner. At Jesus House, just today, we fed a hundred and twenty-two people, uh, just for lunch. We also feed for breakfast as well. Um, we partnered with the, um, Food Bank today and gave out about five thousand pounds of vegetables, I think about seven pallets. So, lots of activity every day. Um, the reason we are asking for an air conditioner, our air conditioner is eighteen years old. Now, the air conditioner I'm speaking of has been going out since the application process started. But since then, we've had two more that are going on the blink. But, um, we do, um, serve the homeless population, are very low income. Uh, all of our clients are, uh, in that category. So, we do have a food pantry, um, as well. But air conditioning is extremely important because that's kind of the homeless's way of coming in, retreating. Uh, they come in, uh, we open the doors about nine, nine-thirty in the morning. They come in and they can sit and wait for lunch. Lunch starts at eleven and we feed, uh, like I said, today was a hundred and twenty-two people. Um, and that's kind of their retreat out of the heat and that sort of thing. So, when there's not air, A C, you know, everybody gets hot, so. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
I know where you are, but could you state where Jesus House is located?
Yes, we're thir- yes. And my name, I'm sorry, is Shirley Almanza. I am, uh, with, I, I'm actually the director of the Jesus House Women's and Children's Center, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Soup Kitchen today. Uh, we are at thirteen thirty-five, uh, that's, the Soup Kitchen is at thirteen thirty-five East Sixth Street.
Is that where the A C is needed?
Yes, sir.
Council, any further discussion? Anything else you'd like to add? All right. Uh, we were just from Family Promise, uh, West Texas Food Bank?
Good evening. I'm Kelly Boytston. I'm the Director of Development at the West Texas Food Bank and I think all of you know Craig Stoker.
Name and address for the.
So, we, um, we are here tonight asking for support for our drive-through pantry at our, at our Odessa location, which is four eleven South Pagewood. We've always, for the past seven years since that facility has opened, we've operated a, um, a client choice pantry. In March of twenty twenty, when the pandemic started, we transferred that into a drive-through pantry and we've been doing that ever since. We try to get back to a client choice pantry, but simply the need has just been too great in our community. Um, right now, the stories that we're hearing is inflation, the cost of living. It's just too much for people to bear to, to pay all of their bills, get all of their necessities and also put food on the table. So, we're asking for seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. That would pay for all of the purchased food that we give out in that drive-through pantry, um, for the entire year. We serve about nine hundred families a month, um, and so that will give us about, um, twelve thousand boxes for this upcoming fiscal year.
Council, any questions? Any interrogation from Mr. Stoker?
Plenty for that.
On the food bank. Uh, anything else you'd like to add?
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Do we want to go ahead and, uh, hear from Meals on Wheels? Or do we just want to wait and just do this?
So, they're not, they're not on this one there?
Okay, so we're just gonna do this.
So, we're gonna go ahead and start with the allocations, um, with the community de- are we gonna start with the community development non-public service request? Is that where we're gonna start? Can I get a, can I get a amen? From the congregation, yes. Am I getting confirmation? I feel like a pastor and, uh, people listen. Okay, so we're gonna start with the community development request. Um, we're gonna start with, uh, Councilmember Mata. You wanna take the, the crack at it, sir?
Sure, so, um, for a community development request of, um, proposing seven twenty, seven hundred and twenty thousand?
Uh, no, no, you gotta, you're doing the overall.
That was for administration.
With the breakdown.
Okay.
You know, either one fifty-eight, the max, or.
Okay, here we go.
You ready?
Found here. Uh, for the program administration, one twenty-five. And for the housing rehab, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. For the demolition, one seventy. And then for Chafin Head Start, uh, the fifty-four, two oh five. And for Jesus House, twelve, two ninety-five. And the short-term rental assistance, thirty-seven, five eight, three zero, seven, five eight. Uh, Family Promise, twenty.
Hold on.
Family Promise, twenty. And West Texas Food Bank, sixty-five.
Okay. Councilmember Thompson?
Uh, program administration, a hundred. Housing real- housing rehabilitation, four hundred thousand. Demolition, one fifty. Chafin Head Start, seventy thousand. And Jesus House, twelve, two ninety-five. Short-term. Short-term rental, uh, where did I have that at? I had that at, uh, forty thousand. And Family Promise, twenty thousand. West Texas Food Bank, seventy.
Councilmember White?
Yes, sir. Program administration, one fifty-eight. Um, housing rehab, four forty. Demolition, one seventy-five. Chafin, forty-eight, five. Jesus House, nine thousand. Short-term rental assistance, forty thousand, eight hundred. Family Promise, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. West Texas Food Bank, sixty-five thousand.
Councilmember Sprols?
Program administration is one forty. Housing rehabilitation is four hundred thousand. Demolition, one fifty. Chafin Head Start, I have it seventy thousand. The Jesus House, I have it twelve, two fifty-eight. Short-term rental assistance, thirty-eight, five. Family Promise, sixteen, five. And West Texas Food Bank, seventy-five thousand.
Councilmember Willis?
Program administration, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Housing rehabilitation, four hundred and thirty thousand. Demolition, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Chafin Head Start, fifty thousand. Jesus House, ten thousand. Short-term rental, thirty thousand, eight hundred. Family Promise, five thousand. West Texas Food Bank, seventy-nine, nine, twenty. I don't think I went over.
What was the Jesus House?
Ten thousand.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, what's this, the Food Bank was seventy-nine?
Nine twen- seventy-nine, nine twenty.
Nine twenty? Okay. Councilmember Swan?
Program administration, one fifty-eight. Housing rehabilitation, four, four thirty. Demolition, one sixty-five. Chafin Head Start, fifty-four, two oh five. Jesus House, twelve, two ninety-five. Community development request, thirty-seven, fifty-eight. Family Promise, ten thousand. And West Texas Food Bank, sixty-five.
We don't have much of consensus on anything. Um.
These is not close.
We've got three at the one fifty-eight.
Yeah, uh, that's what I'm looking at. We have three at the one fifty-eight for program administration, um.
Think you've got to do yours first, haven't you?
Well, that's, that's why I'm looking. I'm working off of y'all. I'm cheating.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's why I get, I get to go live. He goes, hey, I don't, I let y'all do the work. I'm just gonna, uh, break the ties here. Uh, program administration, one fifty-eight. Uh, housing rehab, four twenty-five, four, four, four. Go with four, four thirty. The demo. Go with one sixty-five. Got Chafin. We are way apart on this. Go with, uh, Chafin's, uh, Head Start for, uh, seventy. Jesus House at twelve, two ninety-five. Gotta go with, um, short-term rental at forty. Let's meet in the middle. Let's go with Family Promise at fifteen. We have three at, uh, West Texas Food Bank for sixty-five. Okay, now the mathematician takes over. Where do we need consensus?
Um, so, first one is housing rehab. We have no consensus. The request was four forty. We have four twenty-five, four hundred, four forty, four hundred, four thirty, four thirty and four thirty.
Okay, so, does somebody want to make a move? We got, uh, we have, um, we have three, four thirty. We have five at large and the mayor at four thirty. We have Councilmember F- Sprols and Thompson at four hundred thousand. Mister, Councilmember Mata, four twenty-five.
I'll change, I'll change mine to four thirty.
That gives us a con- that gives us a, a con- a majority?
Next up is Demo at one seventy-five with the request. We have three at one sixty-five, one at one seventy-five, one at one seventy and two at one fifty.
So, Councilmember Mata, Councilmember Thompson.
You can change mine to one sixty-five.
Yeah. So, we need consensus on the short-term rental assistance. The request was at forty-eight hundred. And we're, we're missing out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There were two, there were two forties and a forty-eight hundred.
Yeah. It's, it's the Head Start?
Chafin.
No, no, Chafin.
I'm sorry, is it the short-term rental?
We don't have consensus on the Head Start either, do we?
I don't think we do.
No.
Oh, Chafin, Chafin doesn't have consensus either, I'm sorry. So, we have three at seventy thousand for Chafin Head Start. One at fifty thousand, two at fifty-four, two oh five and one at forty-eight, five hundred.
Anyone flip for it? Anyone flip for it?
When they, when they get to the end, then we're gonna be over.
We will be over.
We will be over, and we can't be over on this one.
On the, uh, yeah, we're projected to be over, aren't we? Um. I'll move mine down to, uh, fifty four two oh, two oh five, see if that gets us there. That gives us three there.
Three. Yep, two at seventy, three at fifty four two oh five, forty eight five, and fifty.
You can change mine to fifty four two oh five.
We have, um, a, uh, no, we don't have it on the, on the Jesus House either.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so we're back to short term res- rental assistance. See. The request is forty eight hundred.
Two forties. Two forties, forty, forty eight hundred, thirty eight five.
I'll move mine to forty. So, and I'll give it three.
We have three at forty, two at thirty seven fifty eight, and one at thirty eight five.
I'll move mine to forty.
Here, we're already over. We're already over.
Well, I know.
Thirty five.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to go back and redo it.
It's for thirty five thousand.
Yeah. Y'all are generous.
So the next consensus, we need a, a Family Promise. We have two at twenty, and then six seventy five eight, sixteen five, five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
You can move mine to to fifteen.
And mine also to fifteen.
Mine too.
Um, so we are, uh, nine hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred, and our target is nine hundred and two two fifty eight.
Thirty seven thousand dollars.
So we are, what is it, thirty seven two forty two. That needs to come off.
Thir- thirty seven thousand?
Yes, so thirty seven thousand two forty two. Over.
Am I able to make a comment?
Hmm?
I just wanna mention, on, on some of these, like, program administration, housing rehab, demolition, uh, those are critical. On that demolition, that's what tears these, these shacks down. There's, there's really nothing else out there that's going to do that. And so I hate to see some of these have funds removed from. You know, uh, they, they don't have other resources that come in for them, which, you know, it's tough for everyone, and I appreciate all of the requests. But these that are C D B G, um, department related, you know, it's critical. They run out of funds and they're just not gonna tear that dilapidated shed down. You know, in your neighborhood, or, or be able to help someone that is low income and elderly from, for getting their house to where it's livable. And so, you know, that's just kinda my, that was my, my thought, you know, when I set my initial amounts. And like I said, not taking anything away from anyone else, but those are just critical.
Marita, we wind up cutting your program administration for the, uh, for short term rental by fifty thousand last year?
Uh, we didn't do short term, uh.
But we wind up cutting a minute, we, we wind up cutting it, we cut a salary last year.
Yeah. You cut a hundred thousand.
Was it a hundred thousand last year?
But last year you cut, you cut, uh, the, um, rehab program, what got rid of last year.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Those, those are tough.
Yeah, because it's also, it's, it's, uh, unsafe structures, both commercial and, uh, residential and, uh, unsafe structures and also structures that are burned that, you know, people are absent. Housing rehab is, I've had a lot of requests for that, and so.
I know Head Start's not here, but that was for parking lot repair, right?
Right. And that was a total cost for that parking lot.
That was a total cost, yeah.
And, um.
Thirty thousand dollars. Where are we at with the, with the Head Start? What's he approved?
Fifty four two oh five.
Oh, okay, so that's the approved, um.
But it can be adjusted. And, um. Let's see.
Short term rental is, where do we have that at?
That one is at forty dollars.
Forty thousand. Family Promise, we, that, that's the fifteenth, correct?
Yes.
But you have to, I mean, and nothing by any means against Family Promise, but you know, at this time, it's one family. You know, that's in their, in their program, and not that they don't assist, you know, numerous.
Yeah.
Um, but if you're having to look at a place where you're, you know, might consider taking some things, that's just one consideration.
What about taking a little bit out of Head Start and a little bit out of fam- uh, short term rental assistance?
So, at, on Head Start, where, where we at again? At fifty?
Fifty four two oh five.
Fifty four two. Can we go, what, what about a little bit if we go to fifty there, and, and that's exactly where I was going with that also? What, Family, Family Promise go to, uh, ten? And I wanna go in.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with ten for Family Promise.
I can do that. I hate doing this, but, uh, uh, Food Bank at sixty?
Man, the, the Food Bank has proven that.
I know, I know. I mean, they were there for, they're there for, for our water.
You know, that's an increase. They've been there for a lot of things and.
If, if we, if we keep that at sixty five, God, I hate to go down another five or ten on the, on the, on the demo with the housing rehab.
We've made some adjustments.
I don't think we can go down on demo. I think it's dangerous for us to go down on demo.
Yeah. Housing rehab, where are we at on that one?
Just to make sure though, before we move on, on, um, Family Promise, I had Mayor Hoven, uh, Swanner, and Willis all go down to ten thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Was there anybody else?
Yes.
You can lower mine to.
I can move mine to, it's fine.
Bring it, bring it. I think unanimously down to two thousand.
Yes, yes.
Still not gonna get you.
No, I know.
I know, it's a start.
I know, it's a start.
Which one, the one you asked about, Mayor?
We're chipping away.
Uh, the short term rental.
Short term rental. So we're at forty thousand on the short term rental.
Number thirty.
But you'd rather go to. Did you use most of your short term rental last year?
We didn't have short term.
You didn't have any last year?
Yeah, we didn't have any.
This is brand new for us.
Yeah.
Oh.
And I, I wouldn't think the needs nearest dire as it was two years ago. I'd recommend, I'd recommend that we go down to maybe twenty five thousand. I don't. That's a hard time with that one anyway.
Oh, I wouldn't go down to twenty five thousand.
That's quite a bit to go down.
To about thirty.
About thirty.
Yes, go thirty.
And that's hard.
That's tough, 'cause it's a, it's a need out there.
Yeah.
I think it's a definite need.
The inflation. Yeah.
Who else was at thirty?
Me.
I'm at thirty.
Put me there too. I don't want to be the odd guy in it. Well, I am. Oh, he's the only, he's the only law one I forgot. He's the odd guy.
Who else was at thirty?
Me.
It's okay.
Where are we? Can we see where we are?
Here we are.
Yes, one second.
What's the total look like now?
So we are at twenty two two forty two. That needs to come off.
Yeah, this one's tough.
I think you might wanna take a look at Head Start and take a look.
Yeah, I have to.
Again, at, at Family Promise.
It's Jesus House, that's the whole West Texas.
Well, we given it, it's just one, that's just the air conditioner. Yeah, we take anything now, they, they can't get it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor, this, this may help, but it is our plan to present to you at budget a supplemental request for more funds for demolition. Simply because we've got a list of forty eight already processed to go. So, if that's helpful, we do plan to bring you a different, um, supplemental request at budget time.
Okay, i- if we, if we, well, go ahead.
Well, yeah, but, that's out of our general, our, of our general funds.
But we'll come out of general fees.
That's our general fund, yeah.
So, I mean, you take from one area and you, you know. So you have to almost take away from that because then we're gonna have to make that up in general fund. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're twenty two, twenty two and change, right?
Yes, twenty two two fif- two forty two.
I'd like to move Head Start down to, what are they, at forty? Or are they?
They're at fifty four.
Fifty four. Fifty four.
They're at fifty, right?
I'm sorry?
Head Start? Head Start's at fifty.
It's at fifty. I didn't hear that change, I'm sorry.
I didn't say it yet. I'm just trying to see where they were. Fifty four.
It's at very forty four.
Can you move, move it to thirty five? Move, move it to forty five. See what happens.
Is anyone else gonna move to forty five?
I would.
I will too.
I'll make it to forty five.
I'll give you hope we can do it.
Swan.
One, two, three, four. Oh, this is the one that's messed up. Okay, so that puts us at thirteen zero thirty seven.
We're chipping at it.
Oh my gosh.
Well, what if, um, we go to Family Promise? If, it's one family, if we go to five thousand?
One's thirty is eight.
How many, five thousand for Family Promise?
Are you changing yours, Denise? Yeah, I'll, I'll change mine.
I'll change mine to five thousand.
Need one more?
That's it.
That is?
So we are at eight thousand thirty seven left to come off.
Just to make it?
Uh, it was Monta, White, Willis.
We can take it down to sixty, and this is three.
Okay. I hate to cut West Texas Food Bank, but bring it down to sixty three, and will that get us there?
No.
No, that's only two thousand coming off.
Mm-hmm.
And what do, what do we need to cut to? I'm sorry.
Eight, eight thousand thirty seven.
Cut it to sixty, it'll say, it gets you five.
Sixty would help.
It gets you five.
You can change mine to sixty.
I'll go to sixty.
Change mine to sixty. Two.
I can't count on that one.
On the food bank?
I don't know.
I heard another voice. Mata, or who else was at sixty thousand? It was Thompson, Sprols, Swanner, Mata.
Yeah, we do.
Uh-uh, we still have three thousand and thirty seven dollars.
We need three thousand.
Three thousand thirty seven.
So would you check it off of?
Can we do the demolition?
So you're down at Food Bank at what, sixteen?
That, that'd be just three thousand if it comes out of the.
Take it from, take it from, uh, from, uh, from the demo and then what's.
Or we could take it off the Jesus House.
Three thousand.
It's just three thousand.
Yeah.
Come up with their three thousand.
Just, just take it from the demo and then three thousand from the general fund. I mean, man, we've already cut these services as low as we can go.
Yeah.
So let's, let's, let's do the remaining, uh, outstanding balance. Let's do it from the demo, and then we'll be, uh, looking at it supplemental at a later time. But that's not much to make, so.
We're gonna cut your salary.
Go for it.
I already done it, yeah, go for it.
Please like to have my debit card now.
That was is for you.
So, who, who, who wants to do it? One sixty one, six ninety three?
I do.
Nine sixty three, I'm sorry. One sixty one, nine sixty three would be what we're changing demo to.
Yes.
Yes, I will as well, yes.
Everybody?
I will.
Yes.
Make sure about that number, like, no, one sixty three, just like you.
Nine sixty three.
When they catch on fire.
No, that's not where we kept it to.
Yeah, zero.
All right, we're at zero.
All right.
We need a motion?
Mayor, uh, Marita's gonna present on the home funds now.
Yes. Home fund, okay, we get to do this again.
All right, we have one more grant to do, to do tonight. It is our home grant. We've been notified that we were received three hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars in home, uh, partnership program funds. The following caps for the home program are in effect. For administration, thirty one thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars. And a minimum allocation of fifteen percent must be designated for a community housing development organization. That fifteen percent is forty seven thousand and seventy eight dollars. I'm asking for thirty one thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars for program administration. Two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty three dollars for home, homeowner rehab and reconstruction program. And the forty seven thousand and seventy eight dollars for the chodo.
And that equals?
That equals the grant.
Right.
Three thirteen eight forty nine.
That's right.
That was a need.
Any, if any, does anybody have any questions?
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Marita.
Yeah, yeah. So we still have to go through the process. So, uh, Councilmember Mata?
Uh, homeowner rehab program, two thirty five, three eighty seven. Home program admin, thirty one, three eight four. Community housing development, forty seven, zero seven eight.
Councilmember Thompson?
Uh, homeowner rehab, two thirty five, three eighty seven. Program admin, thirty one, three eighty four. Community housing development, forty seven, oh, seventy eight.
Councilmember White?
Uh, rehab program, two thirty five, three eighty seven. Program administration, thirty one, three eighty four. And, um, housing development organization, forty seven thousand seventy eight.
Councilmember Sprols?
I would echo the three previous councilpersons.
I want you to read it in the record.
Councilmember Willis?
I would echo the four previous.
Make it quick.
And I'll echo the five previous council.
Well, I'm gonna be difficult, and I'll echo all of you. Okay, three thirteen, eight forty nine. That's a zero. Okay, do we have this last sheet?
We did.
We already did that one?
Yes, sir. Council, if we can have a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the budget as listed on the spreadsheet.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sprols, second set of C D B G allocations. I have a second by com- Councilmember Thompson, on favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that's one aspect of. This is the general fund request?
Yes, we generally start with general fund and allow three minutes for anybody that wishes to speak, and then move on to the hot lot allocations. Unless y'all have questions of me.
Are we gonna, senior, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, go through this and do this, uh, general fund request, and then we'll fill it out and do a motion, or we're doing?
Yeah, I think we, we can do it that way. It'd be simpler, and then those that are with the general fund can go ahead and exit, and so.
Okay, okay. So, um, so everyone that will be called for, we'll do it as presented. Uh, you have three minutes. Present your. So, um, so everyone that will be called for will do it as presented, uh, you have three minutes, present your name as a presenter, uh, and then, uh, we will hold you to three minutes, we have a lot of allocations, so if we wanna get out today, we are gonna hold you to a hard three minutes. First one to come up is Children's Miracles Network.
Good evening, counsel, thank you for having me. My name is Haley Howie Swack, and I'm with Children's Miracle Network and the Medical Center Health System Foundation at MCH Odessa. Every hour, Children's Miracle Network at Medical Center Health System treats three children. Each week, nine hundred diapers are used. Each week, more than one hundred children with trauma are treated in the ER. Every year, more than twenty-three thousand children receive care by MCH. These very kids are our future and drivers of change who walk alongside us as we continue to advance pediatric healthcare throughout the Permian Basin. Thanks to the support of stoners such as the City of Odessa, we are able to provide MCH with the critical funds needed to advance pediatric healthcare. These funds go to the most urgent needs, whether providing charitable care to families in need, training the next generation of doctors and nurses, advancing equipment for the best care possible, or offering families comfort and peace of mind through progressive patient advancement services during the most trying moments, which you have done in the past for us, which we appreciate so much. The majority of the funds requested tonight will be used to purchase an Omni Bed for the NICU. This life-saving piece of equipment is one of the most expensive pieces used in our pediatrics, but the most important, especially for our premature babies. The remainder of the funds will be designated for child, child life services and charitable support for patients and their families, which last year with the funds that you granted us, we were able to provide, um, multiple, uh, families with charitable care from MCH. But what am I really asking from you is insurance for future pediatric patients and their families. Out of the twenty-three thousand children that receive care by MCH every year, no parent imagines, imagines their child could be one of those children. They may not be, they may not need the help from CMN today, but they may need it tomorrow. By investing in our future today, we can have a healthier tomorrow. True progression cannot be possible without the generosity of our donors, such as the City of Odessa. But as we celebrate the health of thousands of children helped over the past thirty-five years, it is important to note that we are not finished. We have set our sights even higher. Because we know that when we approve medical treatment, equipment, and facilities, we can address the most challenging health issues today while preventing and preparing for those to come. When we make it easier for people to understand and give to improve children's health, our collective impact grows exponentially. And when we change the health of even one child or one family, we create a ripple effect that propels our community for years, for years to come. Thank you for your previous support and for your consideration of our request tonight. Thank you for all you have done in driving our mission to change the future of pediatric healthcare for our community. With care and generosity, we know that together we can save kids' lives, and we are eternally grateful for your support, thank you. Y'all have any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Have you used the, the two year, what, what we allocated last year, you've already used that?
Yes, I have, we purchased an, uh, drop Omni Bed, and we provi- and we, we use the rest of the funds for charitable support. Um, so that charitable support included, um, strollers, car seats for families in need, we covered nineteen counties with MCH, so we have a lot of families that do come in from the surrounding counties. Um, we have a lot of families that come to our pediatric units that are in need, that need that extra help that, from, from CMN. Um, we also provided meal carts to all the families, we provide, um, hotel stays, and we provided a lot of the child life ser- services in the pediatrics, so that can include coloring books, um, you know, childcare, childhood development for these kids that are in the pediatric unit, and for those families too, so we did use those funds, yes.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next organization of Odessa Crime Stoppers? Hope that helps.
Good evening, mayor and counsel, I'm Susan Rogers with Odessa Crime Stoppers. Um, thank you for letting us come, uh, before you again for, ask for our requests. No matter how you get your news, whether it's on the TV, it's on the radio, or it's in social media, you see that we've stayed very, very busy. Um, we've gotten to the point with the burglaries, the thefts, the, um, porch pirate bandits, those sort of things, we could run one of those every day. I don't know if you caught our, uh, our young man that, um, was stealing merchandise from the Sunglass Hut just the other day, we had his picture on there. He has no friends at all, because every one of them called me, and they called me. They called me within an hour of that being posted. Um, he also called to tell us that it wasn't him before anybody ever went out to accuse him of doing that, so. As you can see, we stay very busy doing those, um, we could almost run one of those a day, there's so much of that going on. Um, we are venturing out into a new project, we are about to start a podcast, it will happen this fall. It's gonna feature cold cases from, uh, all around the Permian Basin, uh, homicides, missing persons, those sort of things. I've been working closely with, uh, Sheriff's Department, the PD, and the Texas Rangers, and with the advances in technology and DNA and, uh, genetic genealogy, those sort of things, we're pretty confident there's a bunch of those that we'll be able to solve. So, really excited about that, it's really been interesting to go back, I think the oldest one we have is a City of Odessa case from nineteen sixty-two. And to be able to go back and look at the places that some of these things happened, those buildings don't exist anymore, but it's a, a big trip down memory lane. I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and there's buildings that, and bars and things that were murders have happened that don't exist, and it's kind of interesting to see that again. Um, we had another great operation, graduation this year. Um, it never ceases to amaze me that no matter how much we market this and how much we tell everyone what we're gonna be out doing, I mean, we literally warn them ahead of time that if you, if you provide to minors, if you're gonna be a minor drink, there's gonna be consequences, and every year, there's consequences. Um, the Friday night of graduation, we had several small parties, um, MIPs were written at that. Um, Saturday night, we had one huge party, uh, social host arrest was made, um, at that party. There were numerous MIPs written for that one. Um, about an hour after all of our resources went to that party, there was a homicide here in the city, which called all of our people away. I think we had two, um, tips come in after that about minors, uh, drinking, and UTPB police were able to handle that for us while, um, the OPD was tied up. So, we want to thank you guys for fast-tracking, um, the part of the, the amendment to the ordinance that helped close that loophole for party buses and limousines, I know that took a lot of footwork for you guys to get that done before graduation, since we didn't bring it up to you until about the first part of Mayan, we really appreciate that. That helped a lot, we did not see the things that we saw at prom this year. Um, so I think it worked as a great deterrent, I do know that, um, some of the officers did encounter some of the drivers.
Three minutes, all right.
Encountered some of the drivers who were very aware of the policy, and mayor, your letter I'm sure got through to those owners of those, um, businesses, um, as did, um, Prakata wrote some letters, so, um, we appreciate your support, and we thank you for all you've done for us.
Counsel, any questions? Here comes, thank you very much. Uh, is it PermaCare?
I'm not sure how I can follow that, so I'm a little bit nervous now. I'm, uh, Chris Bornhill, I'm the CEO of Permia Care, which is formerly known as Permian Basin Community Centers for MHMR. We are actually a local government organization established under Texas Health and Safety Code in nineteen sixty-nine, the City of Odessa joined us in nineteen seventy-two. So, I realized earlier, it's our fiftieth anniversary, and I feel shorthanded not having a balloon, or a cupcake, or something of that sort, but uh, our primary focus, uh, when we were created was de-institutionalization of individuals with severe and persistent mental illness and intellectual and developmental disabilities, which used to be called mental retardation, it's got some negative connotations, so we don't use that anymore, but I'm gonna call it ADD for the rest of this, to shorten it a bit. But we were created to de-institutionalize those populations, and we still serve that purpose today. Uh, we use about fifty different programs, putting these individuals in the community so they can live, you know, with their loved ones and their peers. The program that we bring to you is our ADD workshop, which is located over at Kermit Highway, uh, here in Odessa. At that workshop, individuals with ADD develop vocational and social skills, and hopefully can progress towards working in the workforce. You know, sometimes you might see them at Burger King, Whataburger, different places of that sort, and we try to help them get there through supportive employment. Um, in addition, when they work, uh, in that program, we have some contacts with Tech Dot, where they'll do janitorial landscaping, uh, for contracts that are disability set-asides, and so they'll earn some wages through us. Some of the more severe ones, you know, they just go there, they socialize, they develop social skills, they develop, uh, lifelong friendships and relationships. But that is kind of what an ADD day habilitation worksheet looks like, uh, or workshop, and I guarantee it's the happiest place on earth. So, the other day, when the water was out and all that, they had a porta potty, and they were happy, you know, and so, if you're ever having a bad day, it's a good place to go, but uh, that is the program we present to you, we ask for ninety thousand every year to support the state and federal funding match that goes to support that program, and then other programs that are associated with it in our ADD services area, but, uh, that is what we're asking for again this year.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Oh, you bet.
Uh, Odessa Teen Court?
Good evening, council members and mayor, thank you guys for y'all's consideration. Um, he said the fifty years, we turned forty in April, so I guess I'm bringing cupcakes next year. Um, so Odessa Teen Court has been in Odessa, working with the city, the county, and the school district for almost forty years. We are very, very proud of that. Um, all of our kids are still doing community service hours and jury duties as part of their, um, sentences. Thank you, Crime Stoppers, for sending us all of those kids. They did their job well, um, so we have a lot of kids right now coming through for alcohol tickets, and our normal no driver's license ticket, y'all please wear your seatbelt, no teenager has a driver's license right now. So, a few of the things that we've been up to recently that are a little bit new are the Keep Odessa Beautiful Adopt a Spot program that we've been doing since COVID hit. Our kids have now cleaned nine hundred and sixty-six bags of trash off of the lots around Odessa. So, once a month, we get together as a group on a Saturday morning, early now that it's hot, and we have been picking up trash for, you know, going on almost two years now, so we're very proud of that. We have a teen financial liter- literacy class over at Southwest Bank. So, once a quarter, Southwest Bank hosts us over on Forty-second Street, their amazing ladies have our kids in the training room, and we go over some stuff about, you know, financial literacy that a lot of our kids don't know. It's very basic, but it's the stuff you really wish your kids knew before they went out in the, in the real world. We also have a new program called the Key Program, it's knowledge educates youth, and it is with Medical Center Hospital, Tech Dot, Teen Court, Odessa Fire and Rescue DPS, and we hold it over at Medical Center Hospital. Um, we've got pictures on our Teen Court Facebook page, which really kind of explained it well, but it is kind of a scared straight in the hospital. We do a tour through the hospital, it goes from the, um, ambulance bay to the operating room, um, we have doctors, nurses, staff, they talk to us all along the way. We end in the morgue, no, there are not bodies, but we end in there, and it is basically the path you'd go through if you were in an accident. So, the kids and their parents have to attend together, so it's a great program, we do that once a month or so on Saturdays, and it has been incredible. We have, um, speakers, it is free to the public, so anybody's teenager can go to this, you don't have to be in Teen Court. We've had doctors, nurses, fire department guys have all brought their kids to this program, so if anybody wants to come to it, y'all bring your kids. Um, some of our speakers are Janie and Bren that have both lost sons to drunk driving accidents, and so it's, that part's very impactful, but it really kind of helps drive that part home. Um, like I said, all of our kids do their, uh, community service hours at local nonprofits, a lot of them are here tonight. Right now, we're really pushing Jesus House Meals on Wheels and the Food Bank with, you know, with the state of everything right now. About ten thousand hours of community service get put back into our area because of these teenagers, so just because they got like a traffic ticket or whatever, this is what they're, you know, giving back to our community.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much. Uh, Young Professionals of Odessa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel, my name is Kaylee Banda, I have the privilege and honor of serving as Chairwoman of the Young Professionals of Odessa. Before I get started, I'm gonna ask any of my board members in the room to please stand in your seats. And I'm also going to ask any, uh, anybody, anybody in here who's been an Odessa under forty recipient over the last five years to please stand. Wonderful, so, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Swanner, you guys might recognize a lot of these faces. Um, you guys were able to come and celebrate with us on Saturday night, it was a wonderful evening, we appreciate you coming. Um, so you guys heard me say this on Saturday, but this is the Young Professionals ten-year anniversary. So, for ten years, we have served as a development program designed to create business opportunities, um, support community involvement, provide leadership education, and provoke, promote an overall investment in Odessa's future. We seek to promote community buy-in, which results in enhanced civic intelligence and increased economic growth and development. I have an amazing board that you just saw stand now, uh, most of them are here, and some of them are actually at Woodson Park right now, leading a group of volunteers at the Food Bank, Food Bank Outreach Program. Um, so we're a great team, and everybody is very much dedicated to making Odessa better. Um, likewise, the honorees that you saw stand are also very dedicated to doing the same thing. Um, the funds that we have come before you today to request will assist us in these efforts. They will help us continue building tomorrow's leaders. They will help us continue to give back to economically disadvantaged students in our city, who are the next, next generation, as my friend Dustin Fawcett put it on Saturday. They will help us facilitate our inaugural Young Professionals Leadership Summit in twenty twenty-three, where we plan to host many young professionals from all over West Texas at our Marriott. And, um, we're really excited for the growth that we have on the, on the docket for next year, so like we mentioned in our proposal, our goals for the upcoming year will be to continue all of these efforts, and also to expand our membership, and provide them with increased leadership, personal and professional development experiences. We thank you in advance for your consideration, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, let the bidding begin. Uh, council member Mata?
Okay, for Children's Miracle Network, uh, fifty. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty. Permia Care, ninety. Uh, Odessa Teen Court, sixty-eight, nine sixty. And Young Professionals, uh, twenty.
Uh, council member Thompson?
Okay, um. My little B print.
You were bragging earlier.
Yeah, I know. I hate to take a minute. Uh, let's see, uh, Children's Miracle Net- Network, fifty. Uh, Crime Stoppers, sixty. PermaCare, ninety. Uh, Odessa Teen Court, sixty-eight, nine sixty. And twenty for Young Professionals.
Uh, council member White?
Children's Miracle Network, twenty. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty. PermaCare, seventy. Uh, Teen Court, sixty-six. Young Professionals, fifteen.
Council member Sprals?
Uh, Chil- Children's Miracle Network, I have forty. For Crime Stoppers, I have sixty. Permia Care, I have ninety. Teen Court, I have sixty-five.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Sixty-five. YPO, I have fifteen.
Council member Willis?
For Children's Miracle Network, I have thirty. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty. Permia Care, ninety. Odessa Teen Court, fifty. Young Professionals of Odessa, thirty.
Council member Swann?
Uh, Children's Miracle Network, fifty. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty. PermaCare, ninety. I have abstained from Odessa Teen Court. Young Professionals, twenty.
Okay, mayor? Uh, hm, hm, uh, Children Med- uh, Children's, uh, Medical Network, fifty. Odessa Crime Stoppers, uh, we already consensus there at sixty. PermaCare's over at ninety for the match. Odessa Teen Court, sixty-eight point, sixty-eight, nine sixty. And YPO? No, I'll go ahead and do the, the twenty, I was doing twenty-five, but twenty.
Twenty-five or twenty?
Twenty, I was gonna do twenty-five, but it was twenty.
So, the one we don't have consensus on is Odessa Teen Court? There are three at sixty-eight, nine sixty, one at sixty-six, one at sixty-five, and one at fifty. And then one abstained.
So, we need consensus on the, uh, Teen Court? Is that correct?
Yes, sorry.
Counsel?
Anybody wanna come up, meet in the middle?
I'll come up. Sixty-eight, nine, sixty.
Okay, that's where we need to be?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata to, uh, accept a general fund allocation, uh, general fund request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spols, only in favor of Lady Perseina?
Aye.
All opposed in Lady Perseina? Motion passes unanimous. Okay. Now, we're gonna go to the, uh.
Mayor, let's take a break.
You wanna take a break? Uh, everybody will, gonna take a eight-minute break? Eight-minute break.
Seven, seven point five.
Eight-minute break. Keep your own numbers. We'll be back in eight minutes.
For recess, everybody can, uh, have their seats, and we'll begin the, uh, Hotel Motel Tax, uh, Fund Request. First to, uh, uh, to hear the, uh, request for a hot fund was the Black Cultural Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joanne Davenport-Littleton. I serve as the President of the Black Cultural Council of Odessa. And I'm so glad y'all let me come and talk to y'all tonight. I'm gonna be very brief, very brief. Our organization, we host three magnificent events. We have our Bl- our Martin Luther King Celebration, then we have our Evening with the Stars banquet, which most of, some of you attended, where we, uh, honored, I think it was maybe ten, uh, students from Odessa High and Permian. It was a huge success. And then, we have the largest organized Juneteenth celebration in the world, right here in Odessa. And we take. And everybody across the United States is, is after us. They're, they're trying to pattern after us, and they wanna know what we do. And we make things happen. This year, um, Juneteenth was, uh, this is the first year that's been a national holiday where we were able to do our celebration. And I must say that, um, we had five full days of activities, and when I say full, I mean full. There was something for everyone. Um, many of you attended. Um, those of you that didn't attend, you missed the treat. You missed the treat. We, we wanna continue this, but we can't continue without your help. We need your help. Most of all, we need your money. And I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Council, any questions?
Just a comment, um.
I entertain.
I was able to, uh, participate a lot.
You did, thank you.
This past year, and, uh, I gotta say, it was so cool to see how, um, I guess an outsider from the Dallas area joined in the Juneteenth Celebration to do the Velvet's, uh, tribute. It's just a testament to what the BCCO is doing with the Juneteenth Celebration that it was recognized that much that they wanted to partner with, with you guys and, and do that. It would just turn out to be a great, uh, great event.
Thank you. And Councilman, uh, Mata, I wanna thank you, because you represent the district where most of our events are housed. And I can say, since last year, you've been very visible, and we appreciate that, to see that you support us. Thank you. No questions?
Davenport-Littleton, do you charge for the Juneteenth again?
Thank you. We are a nonprofit, so we don't charge people, because if we charge people, that takes away from the event. All of our Juneteenth, the five days that we had celebrations, we charged for, we charged for the All-White Party, which was co-sponsored. Yes and no, but mainly no. No, we don't, we don't charge people.
That was a question. You're not subject for the three minutes on the question.
No, we don't charge people. They can walk, walk on Woodson Park. We do not charge, because we're not about making money. We're about giving back. Alcohol, we don't serve alcohol, because we have a family-friendly event. We have seniors, we have babies, and we, and most of us are Christians. So, we wanna act like we're Christians. No.
Council, any other questions?
I'd just like to commend you on a, oh, a very good Ju- um, Juneteenth. This has probably been the largest that we've had in a while. And with COVID, everybody was glad to get back out. I don't think there was any major incidences, and.
Can I, can I make this comment? We were scared, because we knew our Juneteenth was gonna be huge. We knew there were gonna be a lot of people. And with all the shootings going on around the United States, we were scared. And I have to commend Chief Gurkey and his, his officers. They did a wonderful job. I mean, there was poli- even when we had our big, our kickoff concert at First Baptist Church, there were officers in the sanctuary at the church. And to know that a police officer is there, that meant a lot. So, I just wanna make sure that y'all know, we appreciate them for supporting us and protecting us. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Brazos Communications?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members for having us. I'm John Mash. I'm the Vice President and General Manager of West Texas Radio. That's the Brazos Communications. I also have our Events Coordinator here, Didi Roundtree, and our Business Manager, Anna Rodriguez. Um, we, uh, are coming to you for an event, uh, called the Fletcher Azul Tacos and Tequila Festival. It's our second time around. We're looking forward to our third one. Uh, it's a, a great way, a fun-filled event to showcase downtown Odessa, uh, and also tie in, bringing people from outside of the city into downtown Odessa. We partnered with the Odessa Marriott to arrange a special room rate for out-of-town guests to come, and we want to expand on that this coming year. Uh, and it's been a great way to showcase downtown. Our first, uh, event, we, uh, partnered with Torch's Tacos, and they, it was a beautiful, uh, partnership, because they were just coming in, and they were able to headline this event. And so, uh, it really showcased them in a, in a big, big way, so got them off to a great start. And so, what we wanna do, uh, with our, potentially with the funds, is to, uh, target the outlying areas and advertise in those smaller communities out there to tell them to come to Odessa for that weekend and enjoy the Fletcher Azul Tacos and Tequila Festival and enjoy the special room rate. So, we're gonna, that's gonna make a big component. We're gonna take, uh, that special room rate and advertise that e- in an even more robust way, uh, so that they can literally spend the, the idea is to spend the whole weekend, uh, here in the city of Odessa. Uh, the Odessa Marriott and, uh, Downtown Odessa Inc. have been fantastic partnering with us, and, and we see this as a band, as a showcase for downtown that just is going to continue to grow. It's got live music, great food, uh, fit, you know, everybody's, has had a wonderful time the first two years. We've gotten good reviews on that. And we wanna expand that and just make this a bigger yearly event for, uh, downtown Odessa. So, uh, some of the areas that, um, you know, Andrews, Pecos, Monahans, Big Spring, Sweetwater, Lomisa, and San Angelo, we'll be able to advertise in a big way in all of those communities and, and more, to have them come in and, and, and see what's been going on in downtown Odessa. And I think, uh, for some that haven't been down here, they'll be very pleasantly surprised and wanna come back on a regular basis to enjoy downtown. So, that's why we're coming to you. We want to, uh, uh, get the funds to help continue to grow, uh, this, uh, special event.
Council, any questions?
Do you have any idea how, I know it was a good turnout, I enjoyed it. Do you have any idea how many people may have?
Uh, we had around eleven hundred this time.
Eleven hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Commemorative Air Force, DAF?
Hello, I'm Gina Linebarger with the Commemorative Air Force, but more importantly, the High Sky Wing. We're the local unit of the Commemorative Air Force. So, thank you for allowing us to come here and, and talk with you about the funding that we have for the twenty twenty-three airshow is what we're looking at. Uh, that's the project we're supporting. And, you know, this year is thirty-one years of airshow. It's a, a great community event, a family weekend of fun, entertainment, also with the extra of learning aviation history. We do that through education, honoring, and inspiring. So, we think we bring a lot to the community. Last year, we had fifteen thousand people attend. I know last year, we put on a free airshow as a thank you to all the community, and we still ask people to go online to get a free ticket. So, therefore, we were able to track the number of people that came in from out of town, which is very important. And we, uh, came up with a hundred and four cities in Texas, uh, eighty-two of those being outside a sixty-mile radius, twenty-six states and two countries. So, uh, very impressive that we had that many out-of-town people come in. I don't know if you realize this, but our airshow, our community airshow, is the largest airshow in the country that is all volunteers. We have no paid employees. We run this on volunteers. Uh, I'm a High Sky Wing CF member, but I also am a volunteer. But it takes lots and lots of community power to do this, and we do have people from both Midland and Odessa that come in to help support us in roles of working, uh, some concessions or ticket booths. UTPB comes in a lot. But anyway, we give those, we give donations back to the community in that respect. So, our success is also based on what you do for us. Your funding is used for advertising, and in doing that, we can advertise local, regional, and even nationwide, and that is something we do. So, we hope that this year you will support us again in our, our, uh, request for funding for this great airshow. Any questions?
Council, questions?
You, you are planning one for September, right?
Yes, September ten and eleven. That's my commercial. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Downtown Odessa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me. I wanna take a moment to talk to you about downtown Odessa. With a focus of revitalizing and promoting the downtown area, we are a small but mighty department that does a lot. We hold or partner with at least one event every month besides September, bringing up to twenty thousand, uh, people at a time to the doors of the downtown businesses. Last year, as we were coming out of COVID, we were still able to strategize and come up with clever ways to keep downtown as a vital asset for the city of Odessa by hosting outdoor events that still allow for social distancing, like, uh, our scavenger hunts, downtown Easter egg hunt, and our newest event, the downtown art tour, that engaged folks from as far as Pecos and Big Spring to come downtown and spend their dollars here in Odessa. In a typical year, when we are able to host our normal lineup of events, we see attendance of well over eighty thousand people, including attendees from regions such as Dallas, Lubbock, San Angelo, and more, putting heads in beds and utilizing many of our area hotels um, and making us one of the most prolific event organizers in the basin. As an organization, we also utilize many different areas, uh, area hotels and vendors for our performers. We partner with several other agencies to stretch every dollar and work together. A few of those agencies are here tonight. Odessa Arts, Discover Odessa, West Texas Radio Group, The Chamber of Odessa, and so many more, including our newest, the Illinois Art Museum. That being said, none of this would be possible if it were not for the ho- hotel occupancy tax funding, the support of private donors and sponsors, and what can sometimes seem like a small army of amazing volunteers. This funding allows us to reach all different types of folks and put on quality programming that continues to draw crowds. We look forward, uh, we look towards empirical data to show the effectiveness of our efforts. So, beyond our attendance numbers, a few facts we wanted to highlight tonight are, in less than four years, we've earned over two-point-eight million impressions on Snapchat using geofilters. We've grown our Facebook following from slightly over two thousand to now over eleven thousand. We have grown our Instagram followers from three hundred to nearly twenty-four hundred, and we've developed amazing relationships with mo- local media that often garners free promotion of our events and downtown happenings, including having done over one hundred news interviews in the past three years. Downtown Odessa is more than simply one project or a couple of events here and there. We have a mission to grow, engage, and amplify everything downtown can be for the betterment of all Odessa, and I can guarantee you that we will and we will continue to be good stewards of these funds and promote our Odessa.
Council, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you moved it on me.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know you were.
It's quite a rant. I'm working off your list. Uh, Michelle Desparza Ventures LLC? You're not Michelle?
No. I'm Richard Desparza, and, uh, thank you, uh, City of Odessa. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it should be Viva Fiesta up there. Fiesta West Texas has been an Odessa event. We've been celebrating it here in, uh, on Odessa since nineteen ninety-five. We draw crowds of over thirty thousand people in three days, every Cinco de Mayo, the first weekend in May. We utilize the forty-two acres of the Ector County Coliseum. Uh, the three, the three-day event festival engages the audience with several events, featuring nightly concerts on the main stage, uh, local food exhibitors, local schools performing, and, uh, we bring a lot of different animal acts, children's pageant, cornhole tournaments. We do a car show, and we do, uh, we are starting to add, uh, team roping and bull rides. Uh, the importance of Fiesta in Odessa is the econo- economic impact. It generates money and spending by non-local visitors to Odessa. I think this year, we tracked over twenty thousand people that were outside of the Odessa area from, whether it was Midland, Fort Stockton, Pecos, Andrews. Uh, we actually had a big, uh, impact coming in from New Mexico, from Hobbs, Yunus, Joe. And all that money is spent here in Odessa. So, uh, we wanna create a positive economic impact for Odessa and focus on the community. This is the largest Hispanic event in Odessa for three days. Festivals are important to the livelihood of our community, and we want to share Fiesta, the spirit, to our community. We wanna thank you for being a part of Fiesta and being a valued tradition here in Odessa and the Permian Basin.
Yep. Council, any questions?
I just have, I just have one. With that many people coming in, you only had fifty room nights?
Well, that's only the ones that we've paid. Now, we can't track every room night, because they're not all putting down that they're here for the event. And most of them are coming and going, so usually, when you've got a, a community of, uh, you know, thirty to seventy miles to drive here and back, a lot of them will go back home. And that's for a lot of the events. But.
Go ahead.
They also spend a lot of money just coming here with, with, and gas, food, different restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
What's the average ticket cost for entrance?
Uh, average cost is fifteen to twenty dollars. And that also includes the pain of the Coliseum, uh, the sheriff county. We support a lot of local, uh, businesses here that are paid by our event.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you, sir. Uh, Junior Jack's Youth Hawk- uh, Junior Jack's Youth Hockey?
Yes, my name's Donnie Margetti. I've been living here for twenty-six years now. We've had youth hockey here for the last twenty-six years, and I've been running it for fifteen years now. Um, we have over a hundred and seventy youth children playing in our hockey league this year, um, and we have about fifty adults that, uh, they play pickup hockey twice a week at this time. We have several figure skaters in the area that, when we lost our ice, uh, at the mall, um, it has been a big burden at this time, but we had over nine travel teams last year that play in the Dallas Stars Hockey League, which is the biggest league in the state of Texas. Um, we also had two house league teams play in the Dallas Stars League last year. And so, what that is, is they play a twenty-four game season against the Metroplex in Dallas, Amarillo, San Antonio, New Mexico, uh, Oklahoma City, and El Paso. And so, we have home and away events. So, we bring in over sixty teams every single weekend that we're here. Um, we also teamed up with the Dallas Stars again this year for July twenty-third to, to July thirty-first, uh, for our Learn to Play program. We're getting ice in the Coliseum that we got several sponsors around the community for, and we'll be putting ice in for ten days to continue to grow our game. Um, so, saying that, we lost our mall last year, and so, we're asking for just a little bit more money. Uh, we do appreciate what you did for us the last, uh, few years, but now, when we have the oil show, uh, the rodeo, and all the events in August now, we don't have any ice to practice on, so it's forcing our families to go to Dallas, the Metroplex, El Paso, and Amarillo, and we pay several hundred dollars for ice costs at this time. So, we did ask for a little bit more money this year, but that is the reason why. Our families travel every single weekend. Um, when we do have those spurts that we don't have any ice for months, our travel teams have to travel. So, that's what we did last year. It was a huge success last year. Uh, we have over a hundred kids signed up for camp in July already, and we have over thirty newcomers, eight and under, at this time for our Learn to Play program for the Dallas Stars. I know that I travel every weekend, 'cause I coached several teams here, and, uh, I know that we spend over a thousand dollars every weekend when we go to Dallas and the Metroplex, we spend over a thousand dollars every weekend when we go to Dallas and the Metroplex, and I know when they come here, they do the same. But I know that Discovery of Odessa, they've helped us out with many bags, and, you know, we really appreciate all the sponsors around Odessa and Midland area. So I just want to say thank you. I grew up playing the game for a long, long time, and to have this game almost taken away from us was a little bit critical, but at this time, we're making it work, and I just want to say thank you for the previous years that you guys have donated to us. So thank you very much.
Margetti, Mr. Margetti, let me ask you a real, real quick question. You said something, since the ice is no longer at the mall, that's where y'all use, did y'all just use it for practice, or did you use it for?
No, so when we didn't have ice at the Coliseum, our whole youth hockey program would always shift to the mall. And then when we brought in big tournaments, so we host the World Cup every single year, and then we host the Dust Bowl, and we bring in about twenty-one teams per weekend. We're unable to do that right now because we only have one sheet of ice. So what we did last year is we broke down every single weekend that we had ice, and we gave them Jackalope tickets, and we brought these teams in. So we just shortened our tournaments, but we added more last year. So the same teams had to come because we meet in September with all the associations, and we put our schedule together, but several teams would come on a certain weekend, whereas before, we would have a big pool, and we'd have to use the mall ice and the ice of the Coliseum. It would start at seven AM and go all the way to eleven at night. So there are certain blocked off weekends for that.
So there has been an impact to.
Oh, huge impact.
To the amount of tournaments we could be bringing in because of the conflict.
Well, not just that, and all, all our kids that usually spend money here, now we're spending money at the Metroplex in it, several hundred dollars more an hour at this time. So we are in the looks for a new rank, and we've been talking to several people over the last year, and, you know, we're hoping that we continue to grow the game for the youth.
Fuel and fuel in a hotel and a food cost is added to it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and like, we're not allowed to real, I mean, not allowed, but I mean, we don't really charge our kiddos more money. It's just that our parents have to spend more money, like, like to play this game. So if we don't get ice within the next few years, I mean, what's going to happen is, you know, people are going to start not playing because it is an expensive sport, and we don't have local teams to play. And so we built this thing for the last twenty-six years, and so everyone that plays is really passionate about this game. And we have several players that play college hockey now. We have several players that play for the Dallas Stars Elite now, which, which my daughter's one of them. I mean, she's fourteen, and she's on the top, top team in the state of Texas, and she's a top six date in the US right now. And so there's a lot of, a lot of girls playing the game right now that, that like, people don't know about, but we have nineteen girls last year that played the game, and six are playing in Dallas on their top travel teams, but they still practice here. So they commute back and forth.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have a, just a question. In July, you said you have your Learn to Play camp?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you reach out to kids in the community who may not be familiar with the game of hockey, and if so, how does that happen?
Yes, ma'am. So we have a Facebook, and we have several X pros that used to play for the Jackalopes. We go to the baseball diamonds, and we hand out flyers. We usually get about thirty to forty new kids that want to try it. I mean, obviously, Facebook's our biggest social media event, and just word of mouth, too. I mean, people that, we have a lot of people that, believe it or not, move here because we have a hockey association that are involved in the oil field, and they're from Canada. We probably picked up over thirty new people over the last two years that are moving here because of the oil field, and their kid's very involved in hockey. And the only way they're going to live in Odessa is if they have a hockey program. And so we've, we've, we've definitely touched on that. And the Learn to Play program, just real quickly, you get everything for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and the Dallas Stars, they, they support all the gear, the skates, the helmet, and then we, we provide like, the ice time and all the free instruction, all the, all the volunteers in the community. So it's a good program to get involved.
Can you reach out maybe sometime to the Odessa Boys and Girls Club, you know, maybe grab a few kids from there who may like hockey if they, if they had an opportunity?
And it, and it's all about culture, too. Like, the more people that play, and the more people that hear about it, I mean, and you hang out with that culture, I mean, it just grows and grows and grows. And, you know, we're going against, you know, baseball and football here, which we understand, but it's lasted twenty-six years here, and the people that are playing, I mean, they're very passionate. I mean, they're huge, huge Jack's fans and Dallas Stars fans, and, yeah, but I will, you know, definitely. We only have a couple people that, you know, we have two people that do like ninety-nine percent of the work, and so it gets really busy. We don't pay people to do that.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Junior League of Odessa Incorporated? It's not gonna, it's not that bad.
I could walk underneath there. Hi, I am Heather Justice. It's good to see y'all. I am representing Junior League of Odessa tonight. I'm the business manager for Merry Marketplace 2022 this year. And Junior League is hosting their thirty-ninth annual Merry Marketplace this year at the Coliseum. The theme is going to be Sparkle and Shine. It's Christmas time, and the dates for that are going to be November third through November sixth. Merry Marketplace sees approximately seventy-five vendors come in every time we host Merry Marketplace. This year, there are ten new vendors that we've never had before. And when we're talking about vendors, we're talking about people that have come from all over the United States. So I double-checked and pulled everybody up earlier. We have Washington, Wyoming, Ohio, Illinois, Kentucky, there was Missouri, there's some from Oklahoma. There are several also from Texas that are not necessarily local, so they will have to stay. So when we're talking about bringing all those people in, they have to stay somewhere for the entire event. So we're talking the third through the sixth, but not just the third through the sixth. They have to be here before the event, and they have to have everything set up and fully done a full day before so that it can be approved, you know, somebody can walk through and make sure the safety is good. And so we're talking for those seventy-five vendors, they're bringing two to three people with them to work their booth for that entire time. So we're talking heads in beds, all of those. We do have our four-day event. We also have approximately forty-four thousand shoppers in the past that have come through during our four-day event. We have a preview party Thursday night. We have ladies luncheon and style show on Friday, Friday morning. And then we do open general admission starting Friday. It's open Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Breakfast with Santa. Everybody loves breakfast with Santa. We host Breakfast with Santa, and over two thousand local children and their families can come. So let's talk about kind of what we want to do this year. So we have always advertised publicity. We've gone kind of the traditional route. You know, we've hit newspapers, local TV, and radio, and kind of in our surrounding area, so local, not just Odessa, but surrounding. This year, we have a plan to step it up a little bit. We're going to go digital. The publicity people that we have talked to has talked about taking it digital, so hitting targeted Facebook and Instagram. I don't have it, Instagram. I was going to say Instacart. That's not the right thing. I don't have it. I don't know. So targeted Facebook and Instagram. Got it right that time, to reach further people. Also, streaming services on TV, so advertising on different streaming platforms through the TVs, and also on YouTube. Almost everybody I know watches at least one of those things these days. So that's, we kind of want to step it up a little bit further.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? I'm sorry. Any questions? Thank you very much. Odessa Arts?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before I begin, I want to recognize my staff, board members, and cultural tourism grant recipients who are in the audience today. Could you please stand and be recognized? In my eight years at Odessa Arts, I have witnessed a rapid expansion of the creative sector.
Can you let him sit down? They thought they were going to have to stand through the whole presentation.
If I had my way. In my eight years at Odessa Arts, I have witnessed a rapid expansion of the creative sector and the positive impact it has created through more community pride, improved mental health, a sense of ownership of our city, and a better impression for our cultural tourists. Art adds value. Art enhances our community. It's also important to note that the economic benefit of arts and culture, the nonprofit art sector generates $6.1 million in economic activity per year and supports over two hundred full-time equivalent jobs. On average, a cultural tourist spends eighty dollars a day while visiting our city to attend cultural arts events. The creative workforce continues to produce regardless of the boom and bust cycle. The arts are always here to comfort, support, and employ our community, even in the lean times. But the arts in Odessa are nothing new. The longest-running jazz party in the world, the West Texas Jazz Party, just concluded fifty-six years of performances. The Midland Odessa Symphony and Corral has just rebranded as the West Texas Symphony in anticipation of its sixtieth season. The Globe Theater is fifty-four years old, and just as Joanne just said, if you have not attended the Black Cultural Council's Juneteenth Celebration, you are simply missing out on the best and largest Juneteenth celebration in Texas. We have been privileged to always have a robust creative economy, and it is thanks to the investment of the city of Odessa. Twenty-twenty-three is shaping up to be a banner year. In May, Odessa Arts, in partnership with Discover Odessa and Downtown Odessa, will launch Mural Fest. Over the course of two weeks, five new murals will be installed on Fifth Street, culminating with a day-long festival of art, music, performance, and activity. Our aim is to make this a fun, art-centered, family-friendly, free event that we can repeat year after year. The last two years of uncertainty and anxiety, the community is eager to resume and improve our cultural offerings. Your investment will ensure that Odessa Arts and our agencies can meet and exceed that challenge. Thank you, and I will take your questions.
Five new murals, five more Bevos. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Discover Odessa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you know, Discover Odessa is a year-long project that assists with a variety of groups throughout the year, groups such as conferences, sporting events, regional meetings, reunions, church events, military groups. Our sales and sports bid services are spent to support these groups that are bringing definite room nights. We continue to use the Economic Impact Calculator, inputting the information needed, such as the room nights, the attendance, the room rates that they're receiving, and that gives us the information on the return on investment and what's fiscally responsible for us to use towards these events. This year, Discover Odessa received over ten unbudgeted group requests seeking financial assistance. While our budget does take this into consideration each year, it exceeded our expectations this year. We've been creative with our budget, giving up some things to make this work for the groups that were not budgeted for and giving them assistance. But some of the downfalls is that we've given up a trade show to attend, our sales staff did, and so that is potential business that we're not bringing in. Upcoming bids that are coming up for 2023, we just learned that Odessa won the bid for the Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives Conference in June of 2023, and we're anticipating about two to three hundred attendees for that. We are waiting to hear from the Texas Healthcare Association Conference, Team Texas Conference, Texas Police Association Conference, and the Texas Travel Association Summit Conference. And today, we just received another bid for another 2023 conference that we'll be submitting. Visitor dollars are the best and most important dollars that we can receive here in Odessa. That is brand-new money that they fully rely on our community, staying at our hotels, eating at our restaurants, shopping in our, at our stores, all of that. Hotel occupancy tax and sales tax revenue, which benefits both funds. Discover Odessa feels very fortunate to partner with several of the groups that are here, and it's important for you to know that the way we partner with them is by supporting their events. Obviously, they receive funding from you here as well, but we provide the hospitality of Odessa by giving them Odessa promotional items and marketing their events. Several events, we have used our billboard money to promote their events in outside communities to hopefully draw in visitors to come and stay for their events. Another way that we will be spending this money is our marketing dollars. We plan to have a presence with Texas Monthly, who has an audience of thirty-four million people. Odessa would have a presence digitally, through print, in their magazine, website, and social media. And, and just so you'll know, we did, what the money that we don't use, we do give back. Last year, we gave fourteen thousand back to the city. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Okay, I'm going to.
You're going to do the next presentation?
Yes, sir.
For the Discover Odessa sports event?
Yes, sir. And I'm going to ask Teresa Vasquez to come join me, if she will, please. Teresa is our sports sales specialist at Discover Odessa. And I'll start, and then I'll pass it off to her. In the current fiscal year, the Sports Enhancement Recruitment Program was allocated $60,000 to incentivize sporting events. All of this money has been allocated, and we still have $50,000 in requests left. Just as a reminder, this money does not go to Discover Odessa's funding. It stays here earmarked at the city, and whatever is not used stays at the city's hotel occupancy fund. Discover Odessa does not have the money to fulfill the remaining $50,000 requests, but instead, we will supplement some of that money to fund what's remaining. This is the first time in the last four years that that full amount has been depleted and allocated. Our sports specialist, Teresa Vasquez, continues to be active, making sales calls to various groups, selling this program wonderfully. The last time we reported, CERT funds events had generated 1.9 million in economic impact with 2,334 room nights. But since then, with the NJC AA Golf Tournament and the Martial Arts Event, the EI has grown to 2.8 million, and the room nights increased to 3,873. Projected sports groups for 2022-23 seeking assistance are the Guerrilla Heavy Hitter Boxing WBC Event, which the mayor has referred to us, and we're grateful for that, Odessa College Basketball Tournament, a three-on-three soccer tournament, the Crowd Pleasers Dance Event, which Teresa brought organically, and they are returning, and a biannual volleyball tournament. And those are just to name a few. And I'm going to turn it over to Teresa just to talk about the process of the program.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to explain a little bit, if I could, about the execution of, of what it is that we do. But Discover Odessa's department is a goal-driven organization. We are building relationships with local planners and directors of local facilities, meanwhile educating planners to collect and maintain the information that's needed to determine their event's economic impact. And just so you know that we do put our sports planners through a rigorous application process, returning post-event forms, room counts, receipts for what it costs them to run their events. Then this information is turned over to a sports committee who then reviews the information, and they determine how much the grant is for each group that is requesting money. And of those ten applications that we've received so far this, this fiscal year, five were new events. And next year, five of those, two of the five are going to be returning in 2023. There are three sporting groups that we have right now with applications on file that we don't have any money for. So that's some of the monies we're going to take out of our sports bid services line item. And last, that we'd like to reiterate, that the $60,000 that you allocated last year returned a $2.8 million return on investment. So it's pretty awesome.
You still had additional $50,000 in requests?
In requests, but it's all gone.
Counsel, any questions? Real quick on the one, $60,000 is what we allocated last year? And so you saw an increase, how much again?
It went to a hundred and ten.
Okay, and so there's a matrix that you use, and, and it's, but what you described, Teresa, is basically an after the fact, after they had the event, and then they start returning the, the receipts and things of that nature. It's, 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 it's not money upfront, but it is a reimbursement, correct?
Right.
According to the matrix that you use of, of out-of-town people coming in and occupancy, hotel occupancy, things of that nature, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the matrix gives us a, a number that says this is, if their event is worth, I'm going to give you an example, like, the event that they held, like, was a hundred rooms and, and $30,000 of economic impact for the city of Odessa, then they would, might be qualified for like $1,400. And.
Yeah. Well, one of the requests, we had that professional boxing, the King Man, that we wind up losing to Ector County and Midland County, that we weren't able to bring in. And then you will, y'all will be traveling to try to recruit the US amateur boxing. That I think this, these are, this, these, they requested for y'all to be, to make a bid on. This is what, a week-long event?
Yeah, the junior boxing.
Junior box, USA Boxing, Junior Boxing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which right now is currently in Fort Worth?
I believe so, yes, sir. Yeah, that would be pretty amazing for the city.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
How much are we going to supplement out of y'all's Discover Odessa for to cover the CERT request?
About, about $20,000.
That would meet the, the needs of the requests you have outstanding, which are three?
Yeah, they're requesting of, you know, this number, but we can only give them like a percentage of what they're actually requesting, and something's better than nothing. Yeah. Yeah, and then we want to keep the customer because getting them, you know, if we lose the customer, they might not come back next year. We want it, we want them to, you know.
We should pick, yeah, keep coming back. Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Don't do such a good job.
Thank you, appreciate that. We do appreciate your support.
Okay, Odessa Jackalopes Hockey? How you doing, sir?
Doing well. Mr. Mayor, Counsel? Just so you know, we had an outstanding year this year, our twenty-fifth anniversary, and we got this young man right here to come out and drop a puck. Had a great time, didn't you? Wonderful time. I wanna thank you for what you've helped us do in the past. The hockey's been here for twenty-five years, we're in our twenty-sixth consecutive year, about to start that. You know, we have thirty-five single-day events when we have our games here. We estimate thirty-five thousand local attendees, fifteen thousand from out of town, for a total of fifty thousand. The cumulative number expecting room nights is around eleven hundred. So we bring in a lot of people in our games when we have those. It was a better year for us because we put that wonderful, that lousy P-word behind this pandemic. We were able to have sixty games this season, twenty-eight home games of fourteen weekends. Our season goes from September through April. Hopefully this year, we'll make it to, we were this close to making the playoffs. We came in fifth out of eight teams in our division, out of twenty-nine teams in the Aretas League, but we're getting closer and closer. As you heard Donnie Margetti say before, one of the issues that we're having to run up against right now is we don't have that practice ice. So that's an issue that we're having to deal with, and we're dealing with it. We're looking for, and we've talked to the mayor and some of the councils, Will too, about helping us find a place to put in another sheet of ice so we can have that practice time. But our cost for taking our team where we need to take them to this year, it went, it didn't double, it didn't triple. It was five times more than we spent in the past because we actually, when you have the old show, we were gone for the entire month. In January, we have great events like the rodeo, we love the rodeo and those things. We were out for another month, February, we're out for another month. So it makes it a little tough on us, our guys are on the road, spend a lot of time in hotels and eating a lot of, I don't know if the meals are that good, but they're pretty decent, I guess. So we're, you know, that's why we're looking to get some more help this year as well. This will be, like I said, our twenty-sixth year, it'll be our twelfth season to be in the North American Hockey League, which our players are amateurs, they're seventeen to twenty years old. They come here to play, to be a part of Odessa's Will Too, to get a college scholarship. We have one of our players this year that was offered a scholarship to West Point. Okay, this young man came to me, and he said, man, I don't know, that's a long commitment, I'm not sure. He made the visit to West Point, when he came back, he goes, I'm in. So for him, that's four years, number one, to go to school, play hockey, and then another five years to go serve our country. That, to me, is amazing, and that's the type of young men that you're helping because they're coming here to get those college scholarships, not just to play hockey, but to get the education as well, too. But at the same time, they're bringing families here, their families come and watch them play. We bring in the visiting teams, the visiting teams bring their players and their families to come and watch their teams play as well, too. So we're putting in the hotel motel nights, and the same thing as everybody else has said, too, they're spending time in the hotels, they're buying food at the restaurants, they're buying water, whatever, so they gotta do what they're here, fuel, number one, I don't know how that's fixed to go up. But, so, we're just asking for your help again, and we appreciate all you've done in the past. Any questions you may have?
Counsel, questions?
Do you have a question I haven't, I guess it's for Cindy, I'm showing with both Odessa Jackalopes and the junior Jackalopes, the funding from last year has not been spent, is that just because your season starts in September or?
News to me.
They, they may have turned this in since we filled this out for you.
That's my new question.
Counsel, any other questions? Sir, thank you very much.
You bet, and don't forget, buy season tickets.
Yes, right, buy season tickets. We're gonna go to Odessa Links Incorporated?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name's Andrea Quiros, and I've, this is my third time back with Odessa Links. I started back in November. First of all, I wanna, this August fourth is gonna, we're gonna be celebrating twenty years of serving Odessans and helping Odessans in needs, and I wanna thank the city of Odessa for supporting us in the twenty years. We house in the municipal plaza, and we've been involved with the Homeless Coalition since two thousand and three. So we have, we've worked with Marita, we work with a lot of people in this room. In the past years, Odessa Links staff recognized the gap. Because of the Homeless Coalition, we have recognized the gaps of conferences and trainings for our social, for our professionals that are needing to earn their CEUs. You know, case managers, counselors, everyone in the nonprofit world, they need CEUs, and we have not had any kind of local conferences and trainings. So for the past years, Odessa Links Community Conference has sold out, bringing hundreds across the Texas region together to better understand poverty, trauma-informed care, mental resiliency, and self-care. Last year, we had to, because of COVID, we had to do our conference on Zoom. So having the numbers, trying to come up with the numbers, because so far, we have a lot of people excited about our August twenty-fifth conference that we're doing this year. Since I've been back with Odessa Links, I have noticed several case managers, intake workers, counselors, and overall, just the staff that works with local generational poverty, that they're overwhelmed and having to care for thirty to forty cases each week. Homelessness is a huge concern in our community. Not just that, we're considered the working poor right now. People are working three part-time jobs and they're not able to make it. Everything's high, gas, rental assistance, so everybody is overwhelmed. With that being said, we need to care for those who help the vulnerable population in our community to prevent high turnover rate, and there is a high turnover rate in our agencies right now. This year, Links Annual Community Conference is bringing Patricia Vazquez from San Antonio. She is a president and co-founder of Star Force USA, a national respected company specializing in design and delivery of organizational workforce and community training solutions. The name of the conference this year is called the Power of You, self-care conference to help motivate and inspire our local professionals. I'll take, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Can't believe you did it all day in under three minutes, that's a lot. So no questions?
So nervous, I've not done this in a long time. Thank y'all for your time.
Odessa Parks Fall Festival?
Three applications, that mean nine minutes? Good evening, everybody. Fall Festival has been a great destination event now that we're gonna host August, I mean, October the fifteenth this year. And we are seeing crowds three to six thousand, they vary from year to year. Our crowds have been big since COVID, we haven't done Fall Festival in the past two years. We did do a little Fall Fun Night at McKinney Park. It is a free event, we base it on education, families, and provide a lot of entertainment performances, but we try to stay with a component of an education and a strong family atmosphere. Some of the events that we have had is, of course, the OC, the three-D printing, they have their setup. We've got pumpkin decorating contests, we have OHS and PHS that compete against each other, eating pumpkin pies, which is pretty gross sometimes, especially when you forget to give them water, it's pretty nasty. And then we had the costume, the costume parade, where all the kids parade through the park and all. But we do a system, I mean, a system, we do a Texas, West Texas wide-area marketing campaign where we hit all the Permian Basin and southeastern New Mexico, as well as the southern plains. And we try to keep everything as a destination point. One-day event, we run up to almost four hundred volunteers for that event to put on all the different features that we have. So great little event for us, and back here requesting funds for that particular event. We do have a partner, Chevron, has been with us for several years and has given us not only a lot of donations for funding, but has also provided a huge amount of volunteers to help us with it. So any questions about Fall Festival? I can go on to Starbright Village.
Any questions on the Fall Festival? Go ahead and go to the Starbright Village.
Great, Starbright Village started back in about nineteen ninety, about the time that I started many, many years ago, but it wasn't Starbright Village, it was here at City Hall. And it grew, and it grew, so we took it out to McKinney Park so it could be by the interstate. And since that time, it has grown into, from a walkway, and we had a couple of people to drive through it anyway, even though it was a walkway. It's interesting, Michael, so. But it was, we've grown into, this last year, we do have traffic counters out there. We had two hundred and thirty-five thousand people go through, that's based on the number of vehicles times three point five per vehicle, and that does not include the walkers that went through. COVID year, what a great entertainment venue because you could drive through, or you could walk through, and you were outside, and something, it was unbelievable, unbelievable crowds. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand people went through Starbright Village, and that did not include the walkers that went through. So a great destination, something that has evolved into a major event for the department, but it is, by all means, a destination event for us and probably the largest attended in the Permian Basin. Our marketing and advertising goes all the way, we tried a new market, the Abilene Market last year because I had some folks from Dass Air Force Base, family bus came up. We also go into Lubbock Market, and of course, the middle in Odessa and Permian Basin, southeastern Mexico markets is what we do with our targeting on our advertising. So a lot of fun this year, we've got, I've already ordered the surprise display, it's on its way.
You can make it on time.
Yeah, I hope so, yeah. Last minute last year.
Any questions? Steve, thank you very much.
I can go on to Radler Ranch if y'all, while I'm here, if y'all.
You got Radler Golf Links?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, go, yeah, go right ahead.
Radler Ranch, this is our annual campaign that we do for advertising around the Permian Basin and the area. What we've done with this particular event, our marketing campaign, should I say, y'all might have seen that Radler Ranch has got billboards about a four-by-eight right by the luggage at the airport as you off, get your luggage, it's on B. Seems like it's a little bit hidden, well, they went up, they went up on their rent tremendously. So the visibility, I talked it over with the advertising and marketing agency, and we didn't think the visibility was near what it needed to be. So we've bought space on the digital ones on the carousel itself. Those are digital, they change, and we can do special events that are tournaments that we're gonna have out at Radler. They're in color, but they're much more visible than on the wall, they're right there in front of you as you're picking up your luggage. So I went ahead, we got a significant discount by buying a five-year contract, I've paid for a few years of that contract, but this would help, thirty-eight thousand dollars would pay off the rest of that contract for the next five years. And that's, we're asking for a little bit more so that we can get into some of the publications that go to the local motels and hotels, advertising Radler Ranch, as well as we also do some advertising in the Lubbock area. So I wanna get all the small towns that are up in the Panhandle, and then also this area, too, all the way to El Paso.
Counsel, any questions? Steve, thank you very much.
Great, thank y'all.
We go back to the Permian Basin Fair and Expo position?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's so nice to see you, thank you so much for letting us be here today. I'm Suzy Kennedy Wyatt, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Permian Basin Fair and Expo this year. It is our forty-sixth year. In that forty-six years, we see so many people come through, and our favorite thing about it are the happy faces. So that, it's a happy time. Let me tell you about our board. We have sixty board members, all volunteer, all pay dues, and put in hundreds of hours of volunteer work all year long. I wanna tell you that last year, I think we had forty-five thousand people come through our doors to enjoy the fun, the food, the entertainment, and it's all in one big package. We appreciate all the help that you give us because we are able to do advertising all over the state and into the other states. We have a lot of people that come from everywhere. We have at least one hundred vendors that come in to set up and sell their wares, and that does not include our regular exhibitors that are on the grounds. We have won over a hundred and forty-six awards and honors through the Texas Association of Fairs and Events, as well as the Texas Festivals and Events Association, and that's for our advertising, and we're very, very proud of that because that promotes Odessa. We are proud to promote Odessa through our outreach advertising in the surrounding areas that include TV, radio, newspapers, billboards, electronic media, and our website that actually links with the Chamber of Commerce to show what is available besides just our event at the time. This year, the Scholarship Board will award forty-one thousand dollars in scholarships, and I'm very happy to say, in the forty-six years that we have been in business, or in fun, it's not business, it's fun, that we have given over one million dollars in scholarships to the youth of the area. And we're very proud, and we thank you so very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo?
I'm not doing Permian Care?
Who?
Permian Care. Oh, there you, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, let's see. Are we gonna make it by nine?
No.
No. Well, we can, we can go ahead and give your three minutes to someone else.
I'm not gonna use my whole three minutes, that's for sure. So, well, here we are again, and I appreciate, while I appreciate all of the birthdays that we have on these organizations, by the time we see you next year, this will be our ninetieth year.
Oh, you're the senior.
That we put this on, so, and I've been there for all of them. So we had, this year, we had nine hundred and twenty-eight rodeo contestants, we had six hundred and eighty-six livestock entries. Our Super Tuesday Rodeo, I mean, roping had an additional three hundred and forty entries. And this year, we started with Breakaway. The Women's Pro Rodeo Association has added another event, typically it's only been barrel racing, but this year, we, they have added Breakaway Roping, and we kinda got in on the front end of that, and we had a great success with a hundred and seventy-four entries in Breakaway. So we are very happy with what happened. We had attendance of twenty-two thousand, a hundred and twenty-six ticket buyers, which was a whole lot better than the year before where we were limited. And we gave away two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars at our livestock show to the, to our future. So we are, for those of you that have attended our rodeo, and most of you sitting up there have, we have new skyboxes coming for this next year. So you can feel, you'll still be able to see the action, but maybe you won't be able to feel it as much as you have in the past. So we did start in nineteen thirty-three. The first rodeo we had in the Coliseum was nineteen fifty-five, nineteen fifty-five. So we look forward to a hundred, and I hope to be around by then also, and I will certainly take any questions that you have.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but normally you get someone to go out and do some bull riding and roping, and Deech was volunteered this year.
Actually, Mark, actually, Mark volunteered the last time I saw him at Ector County Republican Women's. And so we're working on something to help promote that with Mark and the council.
You know what, the extent of just feeling it on the, on the skybox is enough for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tejano Super Show?
Good evening, my name is Nick Hernandez Jr., and I am representing Texas Tours Entertainment. Last year, we received forty thousand, and we thank you for that. This year, my first time doing this.
You got three minutes.
Taking my time.
No pressure.
No pressure. And like I said, we received forty thousand, and we thank you for the grant. We use it to promote our event and the city of Odessa across the nation. However, due to the cost of gas going up, it has triggered everything else to go up. We are asking you to grant us fifty thousand this year to help promote the show to offset the raising cost in promoting the fifty-first Tejano Super Show this November. The tradition must continue to put families in beds in our hotels. Last year, our host hotels were the MGM Elegante and the Fondome. Again, thank you, and God bless you.
Let me ask a question, you said there's a rising cost of fuel, the money they're using, you're using it to assist people for their fuel costs to come up here?
No, we use it for advertising. No, we use it for advertising.
Okay.
Which we do advertisement, uh, we advertise the radio, magazine promotions, digital screen advertising, social media, direct mailing.
Okay, okay. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Hernandez, I'm sorry, what did you, what was your request again?
He said it was fifty thousand, but you hear ninety-two, correct?
That's what's up there.
But he's requesting fifty.
Last year, we were granted forty, we're asking for fifty this year.
That's correct, yeah.
In the application, it was ninety-two.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You said, I picked it, okay. Counsel, any questions, any other questions? You did good, man.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
You did good for the first time, you're good. Uh, UT Permian Basin Athletics? If that was Ms. Winder, we're just gonna get a presentation. Nope, so no UT Permian Basin Athletics. Going once, going twice. Uh, the WTTC, AAU National Qualifier Track Meet?
No, but me.
How you doing, ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I tried to get my kids to come, but they're all coaching right now. West Texas Truck Club went out to fight for West Texas kids for the AAU National Track and Field Meet. And Mr. Mayor and some of the City Council men and women, you all were there to support us and we really appreciate that. The AAU National Qualifying Meet provides local kids the opportunity to be seen. When we host the meet, we have scouts, college coaches come to see our kids perform. For many years, we have been traveling all over Texas to attend that meet. But after some of our kids could not run in the meet last year, my husband and I went to fight for West Texas kids. It's a long story, three minutes is too short for it. We're only asking for help to pay for the basic things like Radler Stadium, timing system, the medals. And so, we're not asking for a lot. The rest of the cost of the track meet, we will try to cover it with the registration and the gate fee.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
So, you expect a lot of people from surrounded area, this will draw them into Odessa this qualifier?
Well, the thing about the meet, the thing about the meet was when we went to fight the battle, we went with no money in our bank account. And we did not realize we were gonna be awarded the meet, so we had zero dollars. So, we thought the meet was gonna be given to us maybe in the next couple of years. So, after I raised so much cane about it and he turned around and said, okay, you have the meet. My husband looked at me and said, what? So, we came back trying to see how we can put the meet together. I will have to say that Monica and Teresa with this couple Odessa, they have really come together to help us. We couldn't afford to do any advertising in your pocket. I showed you the counties that we could benefit from with the track meet. And we ran to the chamber and like they said, they were out of funds. But they hosted an AAU meet and greet for us. And Monica and Teresa were able to pay for some ads in Abilene, Amarillo and a few other cities from their budget. So, this meet that we're hosting, starting Thursday this week, we have no money. We just have to do. We just have to pray a lot and hope that a lot of people show up. So, we need your help for next year. It's an annual meet. When we got the meet, they told us that we could host it every year so long as we are able to host it and it's a good meet. And so, we're trying to put up our best foot and our best face and we don't want them to know we don't have money to host it, so we just.
So, there'll be money for next year, right?
Yes, the one we're asking now is for next year, so.
And we're praying for this year.
Yes, we're praying for this year.
So, you'd have, you'd have families coming in from all over the state. This is a.
It's a national qualifying meet for AAU. Yes, sir, and any kid that runs in this meet, the top six from this track meet that we're hosting Thursday, they have a straight ticket to the AAU Junior Olympics in North Carolina, Greensboro, North Carolina.
This is a big deal.
It is a big deal. And for our kids, we will be going to Houston or Dallas or somewhere else to qualify. But by us, by my husband and I bringing this meet here, our kids have, we have top six from here, go straight to the national without going anywhere else. So, we're just gonna suck it up and do it.
So, you're the epitome, be careful what you wish for, you just might get it.
We open, I open my mouth too big on that one, Mayor. I learned my lesson.
Okay, counsel, any questions? All right, thank you very much.
And then I can go ahead and do the West Texas Truck Club if my three minutes is.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, West Texas Truck Club is my heart. We have been working on that truck club for over twenty years. The truck club is run by everybody that's interested. When my son came here last year and told you all it was his form of birth control pills, he was not kidding. And I intentionally put him in charge of those kids, the two to six-year-olds. Those, they have a mind of their own and I just love them. And I think he's figured out the best way to deal with them is by bringing Fruit Roll-Up to practice. So, that works. Our Truck Club has been hosting these three meets for several years. And we award scholarship to high school graduates because we want to encourage our athletes to go to school. And the motivating thing for me is, I came to this country at the age of seventeen. I had no mom, no dad, no brother, no sister. I had nobody, it was just me. And strangers helped me become what I am today. I'm a practicing pharmacist, not by my power, by my grace, but by people that helped me. And when I met my husband, we decided that we have to pay back. And my way of paying back is by doing what I do. I have seen so many kids come through the program and they are now lawyers, engineers, all kinds of profession. And they come back and say, thank you for helping us. And that just fills my heart, that's my portion for doing it. And when I see those little two-year-old through six-year-old proudly displaying their medals and smiling as they cross the finish line, that is my satisfaction. If I was a millionaire mayor, I would not come begging. But since I'm not, I will continue to beg every year. And I hope you all will continue to help us. We're not asking for a lot, we're just asking for the same amount, even though inflation and everything is there. We're just keeping it real. We're asking for the same amount every year. And I hope you all can help us and for the national qualifier next year.
Okay, counsel, any questions? Okay, that means they're gonna give their portion to you.
We'll have it, we'll take a hat and go all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, White Pool House Friends?
Good evening, it's nice to see y'all. I'm Christine, I'm with the White Pool House Friends. And it's so nice not to be the last person for once. As a tourist and event destination, the White Pool House, we feel like we're doing our part to put heads in beds. We put at least twenty-five-hundred-room nights into our hotels. And when someone books an event or asks for referrals, they're given a vendor's list that features photographers, caterers, DJs and especially our hotels. We have a very positive and economic impact. We host events all year long and of course we incur expenses all year long. We are requesting help with a safety project that we started many years ago with Susan Redford and Ron Eckert, the county judges. The judges Redford and Eckert understood the parking problem that we have and they did secure two undeveloped raw lots to the east of the museum for safe parking. The current parking lot on Murphy has become even more dangerous since then. Murphy is no longer a nice little quiet street. It's a major thoroughfare now. And we have a blind, excuse me, a blind corner to contend with on Texas and Murphy. Even though we painted a crosswalk and put in a safety crosswalk sign for every event, that sign has been drugged down the road so many times. And we'd hate to find somebody else under a vehicle. So, we want to make sure that no person is ever hit by a vehicle. We receive regular complaints and concerns from the public. The lot at the museum, as to the lot at the museum, it's crumbling and it's creating ankle breakers. And I helped one person recently that just fell in our parking lot. I know it's a lot that we're asking and we don't normally do that, but it is desperately needed. A few years ago, it would have been much less expensive to do the parking lots. Just the cost of the paving, paving has skyrocketed due to materials. In fact, it's doubled and in some cases tripled. I about fell over on the, on the lots on the east side. One of the bids was for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, yeah, we did everything, we do everything we can to provide a safe and enjoyable experience for everyone who visits White Pool in Odessa. We hope that you'll help us complete this safety project. And by the way, we were the place where they filmed the recent documentary, The Velvets. We regularly have PBS and different people come through, so we are getting national exposure too. And we get people from all over the place. But thank you for all you do to help us. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I have a question. Cindy, with Hotel Mountain Tax, is allowable to use it for parking lots, stuff like that? For re, I mean, you're looking for money also to help you with the repaving of the parking lot?
Repaving the parking lot at the museum and that part of it. And then we want to pave that property on Texas Street.
Going to the east?
To the east. We've got Judge Redford and Judge Eckert secured two, the first two lots. And we could park more people and it would be easier for buses to come in and out. And we would be on a side street where people aren't coming around Texas. I mean, they don't stop, they just come right through.
Mayor, this project has, and I don't see it on the application, but I'm certain it's in there, but it's been deemed under previous applications as a historic facility and hot dollars are available for.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I mean that park, she has read that parking lot is on the, at the house is really bad.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The house, the parking lot, yeah, I've seen it myself. It is, it is pretty bad, it's in bad shape. And so, you can see the underlying, not much of asphalt there anymore. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much.
You bet, thanks.
Uh, ME Productions?
Good evening, Mayor, councils. I'm gonna start handing some flyers out on this side and we can pass them along, that way everybody could see. Thank you for having me. My name is Edgar Morales with ME Productions. I was born and raised here in Odessa, Texas. And today, I will be talking to you about a new show we got coming up in Odessa this year. It'll be in August twentieth and twenty-first. It'll be a two-day show at the Hector County Coliseum. And we'll be using all the facility, all the grounds inside and out. And this year, we will be bringing you the biggest show to hit the Permian Basin. The West Texas Truck Show Fest will be held at the Coliseum grounds, like I said. We'll be bringing you the biggest bands to date for our show, over twelve bands. And also celebrities will be attending our show. I have been traveling to different cities and states and different shows like this to help promote our show in different areas and also to bring people to our town and to our show. We'll be recruiting vendors, companies, companies that also have to do with shows like this. And also, these, a bunch of these vendors and sponsors are helping us with this show. They just don't attend any shows or sponsor any shows, especially first-year shows. And this year, they are sponsoring, helping us sponsor our show, which will be coming in from out of town. And these are major companies, like I said, that just don't, they don't go to just any show. They are putting us, our show in Odessa on a, on a tour, tour show, which we're on that, on that list. And we'll be getting a lot of people from out of town. Also, we've been planning this for over a year and, like I said, Odessa is in need of new shows, new festivals for our community. And we're trying to target the new, the new generation of people in our area. With that, we are excited to bring a new custom and lifted truck show to this park where fabricators and truck clubs can come together from all over the United States and show off their builds here in Odessa, Texas. This event will be attracting companies and people from all over the United States. Vendors and major companies that don't attend shows like this will be attending our show. We have over twenty different companies and over forty truck clubs where each truck club holds about twenty, thirty, up to fifty members, all coming from Texas, California, New Mexico, Colorado, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Chicago, Florida, Arizona, Vegas. That's just to name a few. And these are already people that have already signed up for our show. This event will be a big impact to our community as we have a lot of people coming in from all over. We already have over a hundred rooms. We already have over a hundred rooms booked for this event and still counting as the show is getting closer. We look forward to bringing you this event every year to the Odessa and keep it growing and bring different acts to this show. We would like to say thank you for the time and hopefully, you know, we could keep it growing. And like I said, we have a new event coming up, so if you have any questions.
Counsel, questions?
What's your entry fee gonna be, do you know?
It'll be forty, forty-five dollars.
Mr. Morales?
Yes, sir.
The dollars you're requesting tonight, is it for this year's show or next year's?
No, that's for next year's show. This show was already, it was too late when we tried to. But the show that we got going for this year, that's just, you know, giving you numbers already that we have coming up in August.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And we've already been told that we would be on the tour circuit for next year?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, guys.
West Texas Indoor, West Texas Indoor Football LLC?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. My name is Mike Curtis. I'm the CEO of the West Texas Warbirds. We started, for those of you who haven't heard of us, which is why we're asking for the twenty thousand dollars for PR and advertising. We are a professional indoor football team. We take the best of hockey and the best of football and we put it in Hector County Coliseum. We put turf down, we put six-inch pads around the boards and we let them go after it. So, they're forechecking, if you will, or tackling into the boards, into the pads. And it's, it's a whole new experience. If you've never seen it, it's a fifty-yard field with eight-yard end zones. It's fast as can be and it's just something totally different. When we did this in two thousand nineteen, when we introduced it, we wanted to present a family-oriented sport that everybody could come to. Our kids, the kids in the, in the audience come down after the game and they get autographs from the players. And we also want to present the players chances to further themselves. One of our players from last year signed with a college for a scholarship and one of our players from last year just got signed by CFL. So, we're very proud of that. We have a very good coaching staff. We also, I wish this was more polished. This is our first time on this. We got, we started in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. We were COVIDized like everybody else. Last year, we went ahead and started because we had, Amarillo and us both had Coliseums. We couldn't start with the rest of the league we're in, so we joined in new league. And we started later. I think we were the only, only, only entertainment in the Coliseum last summer, I'm not sure. But we didn't take our turf up for eight weeks. So, there might have been some before and after. But we went ahead and did that and we're playing this year, we're undefeated for both years. We haven't been beat yet. So, that's, that's good. Hopefully, we'll get the championship game in this, this, end of this season. We'll continue. We also have a five-oh. We'll also have a five oh, uh, I think that's right, five oh one C three that we've applied for. And we have sponsors that have said they would like to go ahead and start a sports five oh one three C for children. We want it for the kids, the, this is the kids that can't afford to go out and get in most programs. So, we'll get our sponsors also, this is where ninety-nine percent of our money comes from sponsors, businesses around town to operate through the year. They've also expressed interest in doing this. So, we're gonna use the twenty thousand dollars for PR and for media to get our name out so that we can further the five oh one C three as well as our, our professional football team. I made it.
Real quick question, uh, when does your season run? Since jackalopes go from September.
We take the end of the jackalopes and we go through usually middle of July. So, it's April, July. Our players are all housed in apartments here, um, and go out and eat. We have players from, uh, or people come in from other teams when they come in. They bring families and things. And we've also been, uh, had invitations to speak to some higher leagues, some more advanced leagues to join them after this year. And those fans do travel well.
Your, uh, your players, uh, how many on your roster? How many states are represented?
We have thirty, uh, players and a good number.
Do we know how many from our state?
Seventeen or eighteen from our state. Yeah, so we, we get folks from all over.
How many games in the season?
Um, generally, uh, fourteen games. We have a, try and have seven to eight home games.
You made the playoffs last year and you're looking at, you're hoping to make it this year. So, that's additional, how many games?
Um, two games, playoff and then championship.
You get the hostos?
Yes. Yes, we do. Um, we've been averaging twenty-one hundred a game. We'd like to bump that up a whole lot more and that's where we need to get out. Cause we keep talking, people may say, who? Oh, no. Yeah, that's where I roll your eyes and go, but, but. Yeah, so we're looking for better ways. With that money, we can get on TV, we can go into radio more. We can do, get more creative, um, with how we approach this. Plus, we can push the five oh one C three, which we really want to get into next year and get that going.
Counsel, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we need a break? Quick, we're gonna take a quick, two-minute break and then we'll be back and we'll start the allocation.
No way. Two minutes.
Two-minute break.
Okay, let's go ahead and come back out of recess. Okay, so Mister, Mister Monty, you get to start it off again.
Okay, so let's get this going here, um, starting out with the BCCO. Uh, one forty. Brazos Communications, five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, fifty. Downtown Odessa, three ninety. Uh, Michelle Esparza Ventures, thirty. Odessa Jackalope's, uh, ten. Junior League, fifteen. Odessa Arts, four hundred. Discover Odessa, one point one. Discover Odessa SERP, eighty-five. Odessa Jackalope's, forty. Odessa Lynx, five thousand. Parks Fall Festival, fifteen. Parks Starbright Village, one thirty-six.
One hundred thirty-six?
Yes, sir. Permian Basin Fair and Expo, one thirty. Ratliff Ranch, uh, sixty-five. Sand Hill Stock Show, one fifty. Tejano Super Show, forty. UTPB, fifty. West Texas Track Club, forty. Uh, West Texas Track Club again, at fifty. White Pool House, sixty. ME Productions, eighty. And West Texas Indoor Football, fifteen.
Councilmember Thompson? See if I can read my small print. Uh, Children's Miracle Network, twenty-five.
We did that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I worked the black chamber, yeah.
Sorry about that. Drop down three. I wasn't the top of my deal.
But they will surely take the money.
I know they will. Uh, Black Cultural Council, uh, seventy-five. Brazos Communications, zero. Rattler Ranch, zero. Uh, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
See, uh, that's what this is.
Yeah.
Rattler Ranch.
We skipped that one.
Yeah, we skipped that one.
Okay, sorry. Uh. CAF, uh, fifty thousand. Downtown Odessa. Four fifty. Thank you for the lights.
Thank you. It prints out pretty small.
Should be light. I'm not smart enough to print it big. Uh. What's the next one? Uh. Ventures, Esperanza Ventures.
Yeah.
Zero. Uh, Odessa Jackalope's Juniors, ten thousand. Junior League of Odessa, twenty. Um. Odessa Arts, seven hundred. Discover Odessa. I'm sorry. Uh, Discover Odessa, a million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, six fifty.
I'm sorry, which one was the Discover Odessa Sports Events?
Uh, the first, well, the first, yeah. Discover Odessa, a million, one forty, I'm sorry, it should be a million, one forty-five.
A million, one forty-five.
And then Discover Odessa SERP. Uh. One twenty-five. Jackalope's Hockey, forty thousand. Odessa Lynx, five. Parks Fall Festival, twenty. Starlight Village, one s- one seventy-five. Uh, Premium Care Family Center, seventy-five hundred. Nope.
No.
Nope, nope, sorry, zero. On that one, is that right?
Which one?
Mm-hmm.
Premium Care Families, Resilience Center, zero there.
Permian Basin Fair?
Permian Basin Fair, one twenty-five. Ratliff Ranch Golf Links. Hmm. Seventy-five. Sand Hills Rodeo, a hundred. Tejano Super Show, forty-five. UTPB Athletics, hmm, a hundred. Track Club, fifteen, she can have it now, okay? I want her to have the fifty now. She needs it.
I know. Can't do it.
I'm just saying.
We're praying, we're praying for that one.
Yeah, I know, I got it. And the second one, uh, twenty-five, fifty and twenty-five for both of us. Fifteen, twenty-five, White Pool House, thirty-five. ME Productions. Seventy-five. Indoor Football, twenty thousand.
Okay, that's it. Uh, Councilmember Wade?
You ready?
That's killing me.
Yes.
All right. Um, BCC, one fifty. Brazos Communications, ten. CAF, thirty. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Michelle Esparza, thirty-five thousand. Odessa Jackalope's Junior Hockey, twelve thousand. Junior League, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, five hundred thousand. Discover Odessa, one point one million. Uh, SERP, eighty thousand. Odessa Jackalope's Hockey, thirty-five thousand. Odessa Lynx, ten thousand. Parks Fall Festival, fifteen thousand. Starbright Village, a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Uh, Permian Basin Fair, a hundred and fifty thousand. Ratliff Ranch, fifty thousand. Sand Hills Stock Show, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Tejano Sir- uh, Super Show, thirty-five thousand. UTPB Athletics, sixty thousand. West Texas Track Club National Qualifier, forty-five thousand. West Texas Track Club, fifty thousand. White Pool House, forty thousand. Uh, ME Productions, ten thousand. And abstain from the indoor football.
Councilmember Sprouse?
You guys do realize we have a budget, don't you? Cause you're, you're way ahead of me here.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tally yours.
Okay, Black Cultural Council, sixty thousand. Brazos Communications, five thousand. Brower Patch Day, zero. Commemorative Air Force, forty. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Michelle Esparza Ventures, zero. Odessa Jackalope's Hockey, zero. Junior League, fifteen thousand. Am I in the right spot here?
Yes.
Odessa Arts, four fifty. Discover Odessa, nine eighty-five thousand. So, Odessa, uh, Discover Odessa SERPs, forty. Odessa Jackalope's Hockey, zero. Odessa Lynx, ten thousand. Parks Fall Festival, fifteen. Starlight Village, one thirty-five. Premium Care, zero. Permian Basin Fair, one thirty. Ratliff Ranch Golf Links, fifty-seven thousand. Sand Hill Stock Show, one twenty-five. Tejano Super Show, zero. UTPB Athletics, eighty. West Texas Track Club, twenty-five. West Texas, whoop, let me back up. This, the qualifier is twenty-five. The Track Club is fifty-five. White Pool House, forty. And the rest of them, zero.
Councilmember Willis?
Black Cultural Council of Odessa, two hundred thousand. Uh, Brazos Communications, five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, fifty thousand. Downtown Odessa, four fifty. Fiesta West Texas, twenty. Odessa Jackalope's, ten. Junior League, ten. Odessa Arts, five hundred thousand. Discover Odessa, one mil-
Hold on.
Hold, hold on, wait.
Uh.
Five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Discover Odessa.
Discover Odessa.
One million. Discover Odessa SERP, eighty thousand. Odessa Jackalope's Hockey, ten thousand. Odessa Lynx, fifteen thousand. Parks Festival, thirty thousand. Parks Starlight Ri- Village, a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, Permian Basin Fair and Expo, one fifty. Ratliff Ranch, thirty thousand. Sand Hills, one fifty. Tejano Super Show, thirty. UTP Athletics, fifty. Uh, West Texas Track Club, fifty. Uh, the qualifier, West Texas Track Club, fifty. White Pool House, thirty. Truck Show, twenty. West Texas Indoor Football, ten.
Ten?
Ten.
Councilmember, Councilmember Swanner?
So, Black Culture Council, one twenty-five. Brazos, five thousand. Commemorative Air Force, fifty thousand. Downtown Odessa, four hundred thousand. Esparza, thirty thousand.
One second. There you go. What was, uh, Michelle Esparza?
Thirty thousand.
I'm ready.
Odessa Jackalope's Junior, fifteen thousand. Junior League of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, four hundred thousand. Discover Odessa, one point one million. The SERP, a hundred thousand. Odessa Jackalope's, thirty thousand. Odessa Lynx, five thousand. Parks Fall Festival, fifteen thousand. Parks Starbright Village, a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Permian Basin Fair, a hundred and thirty thousand. Ratliff Golf Links, sixty-five thousand. Sand Hills Rodeo, a hundred and fifty. Tejano Super Show, thirty.
One second, sorry.
He'd like that.
There he goes. Tejano Super Show?
Thirty.
All right, and then, UTP Athletics.
UTP Athletics, fifty thousand. West Texas Track Club, forty thousand. West Texas Track, fifty-five thousand. White Pool House, sixty thousand. ME Productions, seventy-five thousand. And WTX, fifteen thousand.
Man. Okay, the Black Culture Council, seventy-five. Brazos, it looked like we have a consensus there. Uh, five thousand. CAF, we have a consensus at fifty thousand. Um, Downtown, Downtown Inc.
Four fifty, or?
There's consensus.
We have a consensus at four fifty, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, Fiesta West Texas, thirty-three, five, thirty, thirty. Thirty thousand. Junior Jags, ten. Junior League, fifteen. Odessa Arts, four, four hundred thousand. Councilman Sprouse is right, Disco, uh, Discover Odessa, uh. You go to million. Wait, wait, yeah, yeah, cause we got one point one. Um. Discover Odessa Sports, eighty. Odessa Jackalope's Hockey. Let's go thirty-five. Odessa Lynx. Let's go five, five thousand. Odessa Fall Festival, fifteen. Starbright Village. Let's go one thirty-six. Permian Basin Expo. One thirty. Uh, Ratliff, Ratliff Golf Links. Sixty, um, let's go sixty-five. Sand Hill Stock Show. Let's go, um, one twenty-five. Hold on, hold on, let's go back, we got one fifty, one fifty, yeah, one twenty-five. Uh, Tejano Super Show, twenty-five. UT Permian Basin Athletics, fifty. Qualifier. So, let's go, uh, forty.
What was that again?
Forty thousand. And fifty for the, uh, Track Club. White Pool. Let's try to meet in the middle, let's go, uh, fifty, fifty thou- well, let's go forty thousand. MP Productions, we got two seventy, seventy-five. Let's meet in the middle, seventy thousand, we got two seventy-five, a twenty-ten, and an eighty. Uh, West Texas, uh, Football, twenty. Okay, now the hagling starts.
Black Cultural Council doesn't have a consensus, we have?
You can change your mind to seventy-five.
That's three seventy-fives, a one forty, a one fifty, a two hundred, and a one twenty-five.
You can change mine to a seventy-five.
Next consensus is Michelle Esparza, Fiesta West Texas. There's two zeros, three thirty thousand, one thirty-five, and one twenty.
You can change mine to thirty.
Odessa Arts has no consensus, there are-
Do, do we have a consensus on the Michelle Esparza?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't see the, okay.
Um, three four hundred thousands, uh, two fi- five hundred thousands, and then a seven hundred, and a four fifty.
You can change me to four fifty. That'll help.
Change mine to four fifty.
Yeah, I'll do four fifty.
It's a substantial draw.
Uh, no consensus on Discover Odessa. We have, uh, three one point one millions, two one millions, a one, one forty-five, and a nine hundred and eighty-five.
Change mine to one point one. Did I get it?
She get it.
Close enough.
Uh, SERP, no consensus. We have two, three eighty thousands, one eighty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and a forty thousand.
Change mine to eighty.
I told you you'd go local.
I haven't gotten over yet.
No, you hit it.
Odessa Jackalope's doesn't have a consensus, we have two thirty-fives, two forties, a zero, a ten, and a thirty.
Could've been down to thirty-five.
I'll do thirty-five.
I'll do, I'll do thirty-five, awesome.
As we're live. That is that one.
Um, Ratliff Golf Links, uh, no consensus. We have three sixty-five thousands, uh, one seventy-five, one fifty, one fifty-seven, and one thirty thousand.
Change mine to sixty-five.
Change mine to sixty thousand.
Change mine to sixty-five.
For, for a count.
I want my total going up.
Um, Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo, no consensus. We have, um, three at one fifty, three at one twenty-five, and one at one hundred.
I'll go one fifty.
Is it good?
Yeah.
Make mine one fifty-two, I was gonna make, she beat me to that one, I give her, I give you that one. I give you that one. Eighty-five here.
Try again.
Okay, where are we at?
Uh, one fifty right there.
Yeah, one fifty, right.
Right there, yeah, there you go.
No, but we're at the stock here.
We're at, yeah, the Sand Hills.
We're at the, we're at the Sand Hill Stock.
Sand Hills.
Right here.
Yeah.
Why is it doing that?
Well, we re- we're catching up on the news, it's eighty-thirty degrees in case anybody wanted to know. With a cha- slight chance of rain.
Okay. Tejano Super Show, no consensus. Um, two thirty thousands, a forty, a forty-five, a thirty-five, a zero, and a twenty-five. So, two thirty thousand.
I'll go to thirty.
Uh, West Texas Track Club AAU National Qualifier. We have one, two, three forty thousands, uh, one fifty thousand, a forty-five thousand, and a twenty-five thousand.
Move mine to forty, move mine to forty, yeah.
You can move mine to forty.
White Pool House, we have three at forty thousand, two at sixty thousand, a thirty-five, and a thirty.
You can maybe make it to forty.
Um, ME Productions, no consensus. Um, two seventy-five thousands, an eighty thousand, a ten thousand, a zero, and a seventy thousand.
I'll go to seventy-five, if the mayor would go to seventy-five.
I'll go to seventy-five.
Wait, really? Just like, man, let's make a deal now.
Uh, West Texas Indoor Football, um, no consensus, we have two twenty thousands, two fifteen thousands, a ten thousand, a zero, and an abstain.
I'm, I'll move to fifteen.
I'll go to fifteen. I'll move to fifteen. I did it.
No.
So, we're a bit over three million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine.
One eighty-three, over.
Good.
One eighty-three.
Yes, we should have the dollars available.
One eighty-three's okay?
Yes.
All right.
Three million, one eighty-three, good.
Council need discussions, good job.
We're getting pretty close there, yeah.
Very close.
A motion.
So, we have a motion to approve the, uh, three million, one hundred and eighty-four?
I'll make it motion.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Sprouse, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Zach. Came to my wife.
Spin, spin, spin.
She just dragged me up.
Go ahead, clear out.
Really did pretty good, huh?
No, no one staying for the rest of the meeting?
These I could do.
At least you could do. We, we should've done, should've gone and done the resolutions and the appointments and then done the other shit.
Sorry, my wife.
Hold on, no, go. Yeah, we're not good.
My wife.
I thought y'all were leaving.
It's my wife to tell you, can't take you anywhere.
Thank you.
I feel so good.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a meeting, it's a meeting today. I was up there.